I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, May 18, 2022 at 7:06 PM. We have all board members present tonight. We have, I'm just gonna go down the line, Michelle and Laurel and Alicia and Judy and Maya and Kirfi present here on the dais and we have Gordon Leifert on Zoom participating virtually. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one fair, equal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homeland of the Calipulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855 and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some to Calipulia were moved to the Grand Ron reservation and some were moved to the Select Reservation. It is important to note that all of Land County was an important trading and gathering area for campus and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Land County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Pous, Lower Anquon and Sayusla Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, the Confederate tribes of Selects Indians, the Koppal Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Anquon Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They're thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Thank you. So the first thing on our agenda is to do an agenda review. Are there any questions or changes, corrections, or additions at this time? Maya?
I would like to, I have two items separately. I would like to move to add to as an item for action, voting to take action on a complex amendment.
Do you have a second? Alicia, so I moved and Alicia seconded. Any conversation? Okay, then all those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. It looks like it passes unanimously.
Okay, so then my second is also an item for action and that is to make a motion to vote to designate a board member to serve as a negotiator for a future superintendent contract.
Do you have a second? Laurel? Okay, so I moved and Laurel seconded. Any conversation, discussion?
Was that part of the act, item action tonight?
Yes.
Well, it wasn't listed, we're adding. I just wondered if we could just put it in for discussion so that we have some time to process. I don't even know what it's about. And I'm really, really trying to help us not rush into those because I think that takes away transparency and it is just one of those things as we start talking about white services culture, it's the scene to move things quickly and so I don't know, given this timeline, what we would need to do tonight, but talking about it, I'd be very much in favor. I was not in favor of voting.
Well, when we talked about adding, I'll just still say that we could put it, since we did decide now we have to have a short meeting on May 25th, it could be moved to May 25th, that would give us time if people would like to. Any discussion, Laurel?
Yeah, we're having a discussion now, so you can try to amend the motion and we can vote on it or we can vote on it.
Okay, did someone else have a comment or did so?
See, I lost that one. Alicia? I would like to amend the motion that we discuss it tonight and then vote on it in our future meeting, which is our practice and which is our narrative.
Great. Is there a second to the amendment? Kirfi, so Alicia's amended it to discuss it tonight and vote on it on May 25th and Kirfi seconded that. So any discussion on that? Make more comment. Laurel?
Yes, we must, we must do this in a timely manner, so actually, I, I don't feel that that amendment was made exactly to, for the reasons that was said, excuse me, my fellow board member, I think it was made to kind of stall things and I mean, and we really need to get this done. We have, we have until the end of June to finish all of it. So they say, if you want to know more, we could have the discussion, but instead of having, this is why I don't quite believe it, because you didn't, instead of asking the questions in the discussion, you just said, nope, we can't do it. And I think the reality is, if we make a choice on the 25th, I really want to be able to have, make also the choice of who, what's gonna happen next, so we can go forth and get it done.
Alicia?
Well, I want to be really clear. I don't even know why we're voting on this and I don't know what it is, like all I know is what Maya brought up, but what I am very clear about and what I am committed to is trying to follow our process that we put forward as a board, that we talk about something for the first night and then we vote on it, because that gives us a chance to have lots of people. We could have voted, we could have pushed the vote on what, guessing what all these votes are there for tonight, but we didn't. We gave it the time so that we could be transparent and that's all I'm asking you for, is these rushing votes do not feel transparent to me. And I think you guys, I don't even know, I'm not gonna guess why it's happening, I have no idea. I'm just asking you, please, let's go back to that process of being more transparent, putting something on the agenda, discussing it and voting on it. And I think we'll have time. If we didn't, I would say it's an emergency and we could, I agree on emergency issues, but I think we need to get back to that as a board and I think we'll stabilize this board. And thank you.
Gordon has a hand up and then, Gordon?
I guess I just wanted to notice that I think the reason this is happening is that the process beforehand was that it wasn't discussed at all, was completely untransparent, that it was a decision made at leadership and done by leadership and that this is adding transparency by making it a public decision of the board as a whole. Thanks.
I think actually what's voted on in the past is our understanding, yeah, so for past contract negotiations. So we have Kirfi and Maya, who was first over there, and then Laurel?
I'm sorry, like I'm near the process, so this is purely for me to like understand what even that is and what you're asking for, so it's not making it doesn't work together. I'm really just trying to figure out what I need to know even to make a decision on Maya's under and I'm, so I just wanted to go that other.
Maya?
So I just want to clarify that I made this motion in agreement with board leadership based on a communication we received from proceedings regarding our timeline and this being, I assume, an oversight that needed to take care of in order to be able to move forward in a timely manner. So this is a response to the, to the point proceeding made about the process that we need to do the next few steps, so this, that's how this came from.
To answer your question.
So can I just respond to that too? Because that was, yes, we did, we do need to do the vote before we actually finish deliberations, which is the 25th. I think what we, so maybe what you were saying tonight is that we decided that we have to have a meeting on the 25th, so we could vote then. That does give us enough time before we would have to take action, so. Laurel?
Can you reiterate that from my entire brain?
Yes, that, I, the point is that this action has to be taken before we can move ahead with talking to, let's say, our choice for superintendent candidate, yes. And that the original email came from our conference saying we should act on it tonight because we didn't think there was going to be a meeting, the only thing we had was an executive session on, on May 25th, but after, we are gonna have to have a meeting, we realized tonight, so that does open up one more possibility to take action that night. Does that? Laurel?
Yeah, that is helpful and I would like to know if board members are happy, agree with the vote.
If that means we had to talk about it tonight and we vote in a week, if that achieves my purpose, where ladies have more transparency and people get in the way and if that is necessary and is consistent with how we run things as a board.
Do you mind amending your motion to no date?
No, I do not want to amend it, so I would, I would ask for amendment, to postpone, to move it to a item for discussion with an item for action scheduled for our next meeting, which will be the 25th.
Okay, who seconded that one? Kirfi, I think, are you okay with the, okay, great. Any more discussion? So let's, let's vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of the amendment that Alicia just repeated, raise your hand, say aye. Okay, that amendment passes unanimously, so we don't have, since it was amended, that give me a vote back to the original?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're going to vote the original motion. Do you want to restate it, Maya?
I moved to add to, as an item for action, voting to designate a board member to conduct contract negotiations for our future superintendent.
And this evidence for information tonight to discuss.
Well, no, my original motion was what I just said, so now we just sort of, okay.
Okay. So all those in favor of that motion, raise your hand.
What?
We already passed the amendment.
We, no.
I'm sorry, we had sort the amendment into the motion.
She amended the original amendment and then we're just voting to keep going, but what she's asking, but she amended it, right?
Yes. So we, go ahead, Alicia.
Oh, Sam, I don't think we need to vote on mine's.
Okay, I think we have it passed. Everyone's clear on what we're doing.
Because we changed, oh.
We are not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight and we're gonna talk about it under items for information so people understand what it is, we'll be voting on the 25th, okay? Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Then with the two additions, the two additions to the agenda, I, we're, is everyone okay with the agenda as it is? If we can just do that without an objection? Or no objection, okay, moving on. Now I will leave as comments from the superintendent. Superintendent Benner.
Thank you, Board Chair, good evening, board members and community. Last weekend, our country experienced multiple senseless acts of mass violence, including the racially motivated mass shootings at grocery stores predominantly black community in Buffalo and predominantly Taiwanese church in Southern California. These tragic events remind us that we as a nation are too often confronted with hatred and violence. No one should have to fear going out to shop, to church, to school. Every incident of mass violence tears at the fabric of our country and is felt by all communities near and far. We are ready to support and hold space for our students and staff impacted by these terrible hate crimes. In Eugene School District 4J, we reaffirm our commitment to becoming an anti-racist school district and continuing our work to dismantle systems of racial injustice and oppression in education. On a lighter note, the Budget Committee met on Monday and the budget was approved and the cap rate declared from the Budget Committee and passed on for voting at one of our next board meetings. Before the board will vote on that, the public will be given opportunity to speak to the budget. That would be in June and I do really, I just don't have a date in my head, so if anyone wants to comment, there will be a time for public comment just on the budget, so stay tuned to the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna make some comments as Board Chair and just want to acknowledge what you mentioned about what's going on in our country right now. I'm gonna refocus us back into our district tonight. In the past couple of weeks, we've been really full of planning and actually, it's exciting. We had a culmination of the work for our superintendent search with two full days of in-person interviews with the four finalist candidates to the superintendent position, which took place all day Wednesday and Thursday. We had about 75 to 80 panelists that were made up of stakeholders who participated in one to 10 different interview panels. Participants nominated themselves or someone nominated them and they were selected to create a broad and diverse representation with the intention of including voices we don't typically hear from. The interview panels received some anti-bias training from the ALMA consultants and they created their own questions for their panels. And we had a panel of teachers and unlicensed staff, school building administrators, classified staff, other administrators, managers, and directors, parent and community members, which was open to the public, the public got to watch that panel, ask questions of the candidates, and then a panel of students, which was also one that public could tune into and watch. Then we had a meet and greet session with members from OSEA, managed MAPS, managers, administrators, principals, and supervisors, and EEA, which represents our licensed staff. And last, we had interviews from the board, our board. So after the panels did their interviews, each panelist completed and submitted a survey on each of the candidates. In addition, there was a survey that community members could complete after listening to the recorded videos and the interviews from the community members and the parent panel, uh, parent, community of parent, community members or parents and the student panels. We received about 350 total responses, which probably represents about 100 people from our communities, so like this, each response was counted separately and there were four candidates. So I just want to take a moment to thank the many people who helped make this happen, staff and community members who participated on the panels and those who listened in and to everyone who took the time to provide thoughtful input. I want to give special thanks and call it to our staff members who helped organize and support this effort here on the ground, doing extra duty, specifically Lisa Fodorbeck and Carrie Delph. I want to thank our ALMA consultants for their guidance to help build a more inclusive process and bring more voices into this than we typically hear from. And to the fellow board members with the long hours they're putting in and the diligence, the diligence they're approaching this important task. And I know this board is also just made up of volunteers. So we're now doing site visits for all four candidates and talking to a wide range of people who work with them in a variety of capacities. And next week, we'll be sorting through all this and moving towards a final decision. I also just want to talk a little bit, last night, I was able to attend the community training on RQP, which is Respond, Question, and Persuade, which was hosted by 4J and was taught by, and Angie Meyer was there from our district safety team, but the presentation was done by Roger Brubecker from Land County Public Health, he's a suicide prevention coordinator. The information was really relevant and really useful and I hope that every parent in 4J and staff member gets to receive this training, because it focused us on signs and signals that you could recognize when a child or youth is really thinking about suicide and somewhere on the continuum, either just beginning to think about suicide or really getting serious. And that's really, and how, and we really, the most important thing I learned is how important is to respond. Our needs to respond, to ask, what are you feeling, what's going on? My biggest takeaway is that you can't really do this wrong, you really need to act on it if you feel that you, that someone is considering this. To question and go, what are you feeling? To really, to really ask that person what's going on for them and recognize those emotions are real. And if you get the chance to talk about possibilities, that suicide is one possibility, possible solution, but there are other ones and then you talk with the person about it and identify them. My last takeaway from last night gave me great cause that even our community and country, we know this, are really experiencing huge increases in depression, anxiety, trauma, and hopelessness. And we have a lot of work to do to address this crisis from the very beginning on through our system. And I really, I know we need to engage and do more to engage our school staff, all of our parents and our peers to really make a difference, so thank you. So now we are moving to items, oh, comments by our student representatives and I don't know who's here. One representative is here, sis Lisa, and the second one?
It's Violet.
It's Violet, okay, can we get Violet on the screen? She's, Violet represents International High School. You see her? Oh, good, she's on my screen. Go ahead, Violet.
Hello. Hi, can y'all hear me? Okay, perfect. So hello, I just have a few sort of announcements about what's going on with International High School right now as we're getting towards the end of the year. So we have been planning a student government, our IHS celebration, which happens every year, but obviously been postponed for a few years now because of COVID. So we're finally having again, which we're all really excited about, it's happening on May 23rd, which is next Monday, so pretty soon, from 5:30 to 8:30 at Oakway Center. We have a bunch of businesses involved and it's gonna be a lot of fun. We have some different like student groups from all the different like 4J campuses coming and it's also like a big fundraiser we do for this organization, which is like Kiva and we do like micro loans basically to all these people, individuals who are like seeking help for all these different things, so it's gonna be really fun and we're just really excited that we get to have it again with all the schools and all the campuses all together. Another thing is this was the last week of IB testing, so after Friday, everyone will be done, which is really exciting for the seniors who've been sort of in this weird period of testing for two years, so we're really excited about that and everyone, all the campuses should be done, French the last test. And then each campus is also planning an end of year field day celebration at all the schools, so with like all of the different grades, it's gonna be like food and games and over at like Churchill's IHS campus, we're planning like a big scavenger hunt competition between all the grades, so it should be a fun way to sort of like end out the year as a community, trying to get that back. And in the next few weeks, in the first week of June, we're having our big senior celebration at Sheldon's Field and so it'll be like basically all of our like senior awards for IHS and our full IB students getting their stoles and everything, so it should be a fun way to celebrate all together. And then my last thing is that we recently just did elections for our next year's leadership within IHS student government, which has been really exciting to get to be there and like meet all the people who will be leaving in next year, because I'm a senior, so I won't be there. And yeah, it's really exciting to have a great group of new people, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, now we get to hear speakers get public testimony and we have 10 speakers signed up tonight, six on Zoom and four in person. No, it looks like five in person. And six on Zoom, so there are 11? Okay, great. So Carrie, are you going to? Yes, thanks.
I am before the board chair reading the statement about public testimony. We did have a number of people signed up to speak, following the usual procedures to speak at a board meeting tonight. As established process, people requested to speak prior to 5:00 PM on Monday, the day before the meeting and priority was given to residents who have not spoken in the most recent one or two meetings who make requests by that deadline. And we do have 10 speakers, we have, we are starting with six people who are on Zoom and we are following that with four speakers who are planning to speak in person. And the first speakers will be Angie Laurel, followed by Roscoe Karen.
So let me read my statement first, okay? The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time at each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board-publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7706 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. So we'll start with the Zoom speakers, right?
Yes, thank you, and as I said, the first speaker was Angie Laurel, we don't see her in the audience, so Roscoe Karen is coming in as the first speaker. You will be followed by Larry Nguyen and then also.
Good evening, my name is Roscoe Karen, I'm a retired 4J teacher and a member of CAPE, the Community Alliance for Public Education. About 20 years ago, I watched all of the shop equipment being removed from Jefferson Middle School where I taught. The band saw, the drill press, the belt sanders, all were taken away and sold off. Same with the Home Eck kitchen equipment. All across the country, including 4J, parents, students, and staff were told by the education experts that in the 21st century, most work would be done with computers, that most students would go to four-year colleges, and that manual arts programs were things of the past. The decision to eliminate the manual arts programs was presented as an either/or, either you are backward thinking or forward thinking. The experts knew that in the future, there would be far fewer jobs for carpenters or cooks or mechanics or electricians. The experts did not know that those classes helped to keep students coming to school and were great ways to make math, geometry, problem solving, and science real and meaningful. We all know how well all of that turned out. We've been living through a skilled worker shortage for years. High school dropouts increased for well over a decade. The experts never admitted the folly of their ways and the resulting damage done. Also 20 years ago, the experts knew that standard, they using standardized testing, standardized curriculum, and standardized instruction would eliminate the class and ethnicity-associated achievement gap. The experts knew that controlling educational inputs would maximize learning outputs. So here we are. Here's what I know. Experts, conventional wisdom, and group think are often very, very wrong. I also know that group think and conventional wisdom are extremely powerful and tenacious in family systems, in social organizations, in businesses, in politics, and most certainly in education. It takes a brave person to ask tough questions that few people are asking, to say that the emperor has no clothes. It takes a brave leader with vision to even see beyond and to challenge conventional wisdom. Board members, if you choose a new superintendent who does not question the X Board members, if you choose a new superintendent who does not question the experts and group think and does not have the vision and guts to challenge the system as it is, well, much needing, real change simply will not occur. If you do not hire a change agent, no real change will occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mr. Karen, Larry Lewin is coming in as the next speaker. Will be followed by Quinn Nelson and then Erica Thesson.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent Sidney for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Larry Lewin, a retired 4J teacher, also a member of Cape. At your last meeting, you voted to clarify to district teachers their free speech rights and their professional responsibility to talk honestly with parents of their students about the spring summative standardized smarter balanced tests and their opt-out option. This clarification in email from Superintendent Sid is a significant change from the previous gag order preventing teachers from discussing it and requiring them to refer a parent to the principal or a central office administrator. This is a big deal because it now allows, it fosters an honest dialogue between teachers and parents about this type of standardized testing. It increases transparency and communication. I'm grateful to the school board for initiating it and to the superintendent for her clear and strong communication to our teachers. I would only argue that in the email teachers received, these standardized tests were referred to as low stakes, not high stakes testing. I disagree because they have been used to judge districts and schools in many harmful ways. Even so, this was a solid first step. Next, this board can authorize a simple opt-out button on 4J's website that directly links parents to the state's official opt-out form. I urge you to gather the best technical minds in 4J who can spend one minute to achieve this and keep it in a prime location on the homepage, even as current news listings accumulate. A third step could be, should be, to ask our teachers and principals about any formative assessments they use. Formative assessments, unlike standardized summative tests, occur during the teaching and learning of a unit of study and serve as periodic check-ins from kids to teachers while there is still time for adjustments to be made. Formative assessments are teacher-made, classroom-based, curriculum-embedded tests, quizzes, projects, debates, role plays, drawings, essays, stories, all requiring students to show what they know in engaging, motivating, and creative ways that they actually care about. This is different than students in sixth grade who are wasting 13 language arts class periods, as their teacher told me. 13 periods to administer the smarter balanced ELA at the end of the toughest school year we've ever had. After two decades of overuse of standardized tests, 4J can become a leader in developing a truly balanced assessment system. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Quinn Nelson. They will be followed by Erica Thesson and then Marion Malcolm is our final speaker on Zoom. And then moving into the next speaker.
Do I just start talking? All right. Hi, my name is Quinn Nelson. This is my second year as a 4J teacher. I teach fourth grade at Howard Elementary and I also got to be part of the district's ELA curriculum adoption team. So we're looking towards adopting a curriculum that will be more conducive to success for all students. I just wanted to share my support for adopting the wit and wisdom curriculum as our ELA curriculum going forward. I had a really positive experience trying out wit and wisdom with my class. We learned about the figurative and literal heart and watching them take on these complex issues was really rewarding. I found wit and wisdom to be rigorous but accessible and content-rich while also attending to ELA standards. My students took on some really interesting, complex tasks, discussing artwork, writing biographies, and even using metaphorical language to explain how the heart works. I was particularly struck hearing my students compare the heart to Grand Central Station easily and enthusiastically. They were talking about how the trains are like red blood cells and passengers are like oxygen that they drop off with body cells. And these are all ideas that they came up with on their own. And it was not only the students who you typically hear in those conversations, it was all of the students, which was pretty sweet. And thanks to the curriculum's clear setup and longer units, I also had time to get creative and have fun with what we were doing. I designed an activity where students role-played different parts of the circulatory system and helped each other exchange oxygen, carbon dioxide. And also with the help of Churchill's, Kerry Pilgrim, my students learned to draw an anatomical heart in under two minutes and create anatomical hearts out of clay. And while wit and wisdom does not have the diverse representation one might hope for, the curriculum is clear and spacious enough that I feel confident we could supplement it with plenty more diverse material. As a beginning teacher, I'm excited to begin with wit and wisdom, getting to know all it has to offer and discovering all those spaces where we can help it continue to grow. And I'm excited to watch 4J students grow with it. I finished with 40 seconds to spare. Look at that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My speaker is Erica Thesson. You should be coming now.
Hi, my name is Erica Thesson. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and I'm the parent of two current and one former student in the district. What happened this weekend in Buffalo was tragic and horrible. It was a reminder that racism, hate, and bias crimes continue to be on the rise in Eugene, Oregon, and the entire US. In 2019, FBI reported 7,608 hate and bias crimes. In 2020, Oregon investigated 270 hate crimes, up 70% from 160 the year before. In 2020, Eugene ranked first in the state with 24.3 hate crimes per 1,000 residents, a total of 54 incidents. 61% of these crimes are motivated by race, 20% motivated by sexual orientation. All this information was found on the FBI.gov website and the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission website. Public education is one of our most valuable and important resources and a cornerstone of our democracy. 4J and all public school systems can help play a role in decreasing hate and bias by giving students the skills and tools for critical thinking and tolerance. I would like to see the district fostering equity, equality, diversity, and tolerance through some targeted ways. Number one, implementing restorative and transformative justice programs, especially for conflict resolution and as an alternative to traditional punitive models. There are multiple Oregon organizations that specialize in this, such as the Restorative Justice Coalition of Oregon. Number two, recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse staff, especially from marginalized communities, such as communities of color, educators that are LGBTQ or disabled. Number three, implementing curriculum that features diverse communities, voices, and perspectives, and that centers those experiences of marginalized communities. Number four, increasing mental health supports for our students. Having more mental health counselors in the school, moving the mental health care part of our district out of the safety and more disciplinary model. And really, most importantly, we need to implement the student health centers and, you know, expand them over to the Sheldon and South regions so that more students can be helped. Number five, having certified librarian teachers in every high school and in all middle schools to help teach media literacy, media fairness, and to help students learn how to avoid dis or misinformation and how to avoid violent online content. Our children and students are priceless. They are our future. This generation has the skills and strengths to have those honest and hard conversations often we adults tend to shy away from. And we can give them an education rooted in tolerance, equity, equality, and which embraces the amazing diversity found in our world. 4J can and must do better for the futures of our children and communities. I know we can be a leader on this. No one is born hating anyone. Hate is taught, and we can help teach our students the skills to defeat hate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The final speaker on Zoom will be Marion Malcolm, and she will be followed by four speakers in person in this order. Gloria Rojas, Anna Diaw Hansen, Sherry Aaron, and Tana Bailey. Thank you, Ms. Malcolm.
Hi, I'm Marion Malcolm, she/her, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As a former teacher and the mother of a teacher, I want to start by appreciating what happened at the last board meeting when Sabrina Gordon was asked to share her perspective as a teacher and the head of the EEA. Listening to teachers demonstrates the respect that they deserve. If we care about the kids, it makes all the sense in the world to really listen to educators, those who work with the kids every day, and to their chosen leadership. One thing we hear loud and clear from both teachers and students is that feeling safe, seen, and connected is essential to student well-being and the ability to learn. That's why it seems critical to me that our schools allow time for supportive relationships to happen between staff and students as well as among peers. So I want to encourage 4J to use all of the state-allowed instructional minutes in ways that make time for human connections, including connections among colleagues. I hope also that you will support changes in the bell schedule that would enable time to breathe between classes, time for maybe a few words to be exchanged between a teacher and a student. Let's hope that we can create a more humane environment in our schools out of a commitment to student mental health and out of a concern for teacher morale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for giving the opportunity to be here. My name is Gloria Rojas. I'm a fourth grade teacher at the Lennox Elementary School. I'm a teacher who pilot a reading program, ARK. And I'm here to share my experience and my students' experiences. I'm just going to mention some of my students' comments about this program when we started. The most common phrase for them was, "We have had." It was fun to research about our favorite topic. It was fun to research about things that we want to know. They can read good about ecosystem projects. They read and learn a lot about their favorite ecosystems. They like to work in pairs in small groups, share information, and not just learning this project. They learn a lot, stand vocabulary. They, one of them said that the ARK program made them push their own limits in a way. And it was a great experience using all the technology, and it was a great opportunity to learn stuff within that, what those were the components of our students. And I agree with them. I like to be most physically engaged, involved in their learning. And one of the characteristics of this program is that they use children's curiosity as an interest and motivation. When topics are developed around students' interests, facilitates students' motivation to get more involved, engaged, they work better and they are eager to learn more. The reading materials that we use in this program was very different levels, not only the reading level books, but also the creative level books. Within the unit, we have all of this variety. So regardless, my students' reading level, they were, they had the opportunity to have access to different texts, from easy to very complex texts, reading texts. So that actually was useful and helped us to guide and engage students in sustained discussions. This program provided a lot of opportunity for students to speak with and write. They work in pairs, they had to, the program has a lot of graphic organizers to help the students organize their information and organize the manner. Rubrics are great too for students to measure their own classes. And in that class, there's co-therapeutic learning, which is allows the students to work in groups, the chance to practice a higher form of thinking. There's so many things to say about this program, and I'm here just to, they know that it's a great material for our students to have, evolve, and get ready for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anna Diaw Hansen, followed by Sherry Aaron.
Good morning, Mary. Good morning. I don't know what time it is. It's one of those days. My name is Anna Diaw Hansen. I am a fifth grade teacher at the moment at the Camino de Lio. And I'll just say whatever it is that she said. My kids loved, absolutely loved the program, ARK. For them, it's a beautiful challenge because they have a role project and they got to choose the project. Though I gave them to a book, and I know I can share anything I can show you, but their books, most of them are still as the one that they did the research on. So, just saying. Now, that, that's a pretty good one for me, as a bilingual educator in a bilingual school. I find that it was, I have to read because I'm too nervous. Sorry. Just when we read it into languages, we have to, to be able to, to teach both languages. And it doesn't matter whether it's English and whatever other, they, we don't teach them the same because each language is different. ARK allows us to have those two languages, in our case, Spanish and English. And they go hand in hand. And I have this amazing toolkit in, which Spanish is Gallimere, and I believe in English is, oh, Peruan? Or something like that. I don't know if it's in English, I just know it's Spanish one. And we're able to work one-on-one with the kiddos and know where they are and know there is a habit holes in the, in the learning process so that when we teach, we don't teach just this standard block, the little pass, but we are teaching to the needs of the student, and that's what used to be. And, oh, I'm sorry, I heard that because I was 30 seconds away. I have so much to say, but I'll just have to say that as a, as a teacher who does not like cooking, coloring lessons, or tasks, I see my kiddos learning. I see them challenging themselves. And just like Gloria said, it challenges them in a good way, and that means that they're learning, as I know they're learning, no matter what other people say. Thank you. That's all I have to say. We love this program because it helps the kiddos learn.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Sherry Aaron, followed by Tana Bailey.
Good evening. Actually, I've been a teacher at 4J for 23 years, mostly at Kenyon. And I've been participating in our ELA adoption process since June 2021. I want to address a very specific concern about our community adoption. A few weeks ago, I was speaking with a colleague about the curriculum pilot, and she said, "Well, we'll all go to the training, gather our new curriculum, then go back to our classrooms and do what we do." Her comment was easily relatable and not uncommon, I'm sure. What she didn't know was that I walked away feeling disheartened. My colleagues, my colleague, this one, didn't have the background that we on the pilot, pilot team have had to construct. We've worked so incredibly hard on this adoption. We've done our homework, we've struggled, we sacrificed. We chose it because we learned early on that we can make a difference, the kind of dream we have. We can actually make a broad and very significant closure in the ELA achievement gap. So we have never taken our turn lately. The new adoption represents a fundamental shift in how we teach reading. It's a shift in how we understand the process of learning to read. It's an absolute foundational shift from what we were taught in our teacher programs for teaching reading. Next year, we teachers will be learning a new curriculum, but we will also be learning how to be reading teachers all over again. But we will also be learning how to be reading teachers all over again. This is a monumental task that brings me back to my colleague's casual statement that I really don't fault her for. I know that my comments here sort of beg the question, do we need to regulate teachers to ensure program fidelity? The answer is rebounding, no. That would introduce four reinforced dynamics that are detrimental to all of us and what we want to do as educators. Rather, teachers need to be fully supported through this adoption process. We need background education so we can all start on the same page. We need materials and program introductions. Then, through the year, we need ongoing support. We're smart and we can do this. But we need time to plan, collaborate, and reflect. We need opportunities to come back and ask questions after we've had a heads in it for a while. We need grace to not get involved at the outset. This curriculum, and the more important shifts in reading instruction that come with it, has the potential to radically change our outcomes in 4J, especially for our more marginalized populations in the coming years. It forces work to do well.
Thank you. And the final speaker tonight is Tana Bailey.
Hello. I'm Tana Bailey. I teach a four-five blend at Toonos. And I was also on ELA pilot committee this year. I'm here to give you additional insight into the written list of curriculum from a classroom viewpoint. My class used the fourth grade curriculum module called "The Great Heart", just like Quinn. Quinn and I worked on the same team. The essential question was, what does it take to have a great heart, both figuratively and literally? For the figurative component, the students studied biographies and quotes from historical figures who made a difference in the world through their compassion. They used Socratic seminars to discuss the various components leading to their success, as well as the numerous difficulties they experienced in their lives leading up to their successes. The students were able to put their thoughts to paper through essays and poems. My class also studied the literal side of the heart, learning all about the inner workings. There were over fifty vocabulary words that students learned. And they were able to use in the context as well as to show them their heart diagram. I doubt many high schoolers are as knowledgeable about the heart as my kiddos now are. ADDict strategies were also included throughout the module, including the essential question, the frame model, one-pageers, two- and three-column notes, and quick writes. These strategies fit in with the district's goal of expanding ADD in elementary schools. I was very impressed with this curriculum. As a reading specialist, I appreciated the integration of learning that was embedded in the module. Students were able to take the text and adjust it to their level, as well as stretch to the next level of learning. The vocabulary was rich and interesting, as were the writing components. My students were excited each day to learn about the heart. I would recommend this curriculum above the others that we investigated. I would also like to thank the committee who spent so much time pouring their hearts into all of the stuff behind the scenes. And anyway, thank you for your time.
And I thought it was two minutes, so you got off.
Can we hear from one of the twenty conservative members of our community that are sitting in the audience tonight?
Or actually even any member of the public, rather than just your staff that you can talk to at any time at any launch.
Now Julie, there's a point of order. If you can listen. You, we allow ten parents, you allow ten, ten, ten speakers, but no.
Excuse me. We need to take a recess.
We'll be back in five minutes.
Teachers and you don't allow parents to speak.
You cannot.
How is a parent superintendent talking to parents?
Are you trying to disguise something right now?
You do that every night.
You know how to, you know how to do the.
Is my skin wrong color? Is that why, is that why I told you to say me?
I don't know why my skin's not, I'm not, I'm beloved in here. Why did I what?
Why is that teacher didn't speak? And I have a problem.
I can't talk to you by the phone, Lisa. We're, I'm one of the.
I, I asked them if we could get one of the twenty members.
Harry's trying to start to speak inside you. You guys are smart.
Can you be a doctor who constantly starts?
I.
I said we don't do it.
I don't want to part that. I didn't know what to do.
No, I don't.
I'm gonna let you first.
I just really just want the superintendent to talk. I've been trying. I'll be.
As the teachers need to speak in the teacher's.
Recording in progress.
Hello. If anybody would like to speak, please step up.
Now is your time.
I would like to speak. Yes, sir. There, anybody who left their phone on the toilet paper roller. I gave it to the gentleman at the door. I'm gonna fight.
Good job. Good job.
You're welcome. Take your clothes, it's like.
I don't want to speak to them. I don't want to take up time that somebody else in the community can use. I've spoken to them before. I'd really like one of you to step up if they extend that opportunity. But the thing I was gonna say, I seem to be like, don't know back here, so maybe you're listening. Eric Bessin talked about the Buffalo shooting. The guy was a white supremacist. That's a real white supremacist. He's got a creed. He's, he is against certain people because of how they look. Nobody in this room feels that way. Yet you label your political opponents as white supremacists. You toss around that word like it is nothing.
That's right.
And Laurel does that every single meeting. And that's why I made the comment I did. And we need to stop that. We need to look at each other and see each other for who we are and stop judging people on political facts. We can't stand here to speak tonight because they're against the proposed policy. And nobody in any of these public programs has spoken to that. So that's what the request was for, is somebody to be able to speak to that. It has nothing to do with white supremacy and has nothing to do with which side of the political aisle you're on. It has to do with constitutional rights, specifically the Second Amendment.
Constitutionally protected rights.
Constitutionally protected rights, specifically the Second Amendment.
And the actual education for our children. Yeah, can they actually, this is the school board and they're so proud of themselves, you know, and, and, and what if, our kids can make change. They don't know how to write their names. They can't rewire their fourth grade reading level at eighteen years old.
Ross Cope Darren, like the first commenter that was on there, I disagree with him most of the time, but what he said was spot on. We listened to the experts and we followed everything they said. And then it turns out, ten, twenty years down the road, the experts didn't know what they were talking about. And instead of having an open debate about what the experts were saying, we just accepted it because they weren't experts. And it's called a legal authority, it's a logical fallacy. They don't know anything more than we do. They're studying certain things, but that makes them blind to other content.
That's right.
Doesn't, doesn't take a genie.
And experts are nothing but drips under pressure. So I've got a poster for everybody here. And I might be watching for the family with honey people. You don't feel like raising your hands, how is C H L? Oh, damn. So if you realize the state of Oregon says 4J adopts this policy within a thousand foot of a school zone.
Right, because that's gonna stop the school shooting.
Even though, oh, there's one six zero seven one protects that.
So my point in the matter is, is we are law-abiding citizens. Obviously, because we took the time to go get our C H L. We don't sit there. We're law-abiding citizens. So we're going to follow law. Are they criminals? No, they are not. So what are you doing? You are a danger to not only our children, but you're a danger, disaster danger to everybody in the city. Because they're black people. You don't know how. Who remembers, who remembers a couple of years back when we were teaching our, when our teachers were instructed on firearms for creating defense? To protect our students. That wasn't that long ago. Does everybody remember that?
That's right.
It was perfectly acceptable because the children needed defense. Safe, well-instructed, rational, logical defense. And people, they're getting paid, they're getting paid by the government to stay in that lunchroom and not listen to us right now. That's, they've been paying us.
They're a bunch of cowards.
Our parents, their time, our parents listening to what we have to say.
Five minutes is long enough. They're only gonna take five minutes.
So let's go take their.
And if you're sitting up in this table right now, just hear what we're saying. That our community, we have fellow community members and parents of the children that go to our school, that taxpayers, that sign for their paychecks, that pay for their paychecks. So if you don't like what they're doing, representing the, replace them. Every one of them is irrevocable. Recall, recall the board.
Recall.
Recall the board. Well, if they're making from their seats in the meeting is not a journey, then we can do that, right?
That's true.
I mean, that's, that is how it works.
Has there ever been aggressive violence down the front by C H L in the United States?
Never.
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 But there's been multiple cases where people have passed on the C H L level, stopped and prevented.
Right.
And now they have a lot of cases, the C H L.
Right, the Upland, the Upland College is a very good example. When that guy went in there. And you remember when CNN tried to paint him as a white person, but he was actually black? Remember they, they made him a little bit whiter? Which is not really the issue. The issue was there was a person on campus that was caring, that saved lives. The, the bottom line, if you take away, I mean, I, I've reached into the fire here. But the bottom line, if you take away the ability to carry firearms around a school, you are basically putting targets on the back of our children. They are soft targets. They're easy to take out, as well as the teachers and the principals and stuff.
And the bad guys know that their school's running.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They knew that Upland was a, a, a known by our, our campus. People, they come here and, and, you know. Look, you know, they bring up the point, okay, there was another shooting in New York. Okay, New York is, it seems to be a very violent place. And in New York, it's where the teachers had to carry guns to protect themselves from the violent students. There are shootings in New York every single day, every day. All the violence is there. Nothing about it, just because the media decided to shine a spotlight on that particular shooting doesn't mean that that's a wall. That particular shooter had the same emblem and markings on his gun as a New Zealand shooter and as the Azov Battalion. Yes.
I'd like to have teachers in a whole district take asylum? All, see who'd like me on. It's a resource officer away. Who can protect, excuse me, and the teachers and the rest of the staff on the whole cross of the school?
Well, don't.
And if you can't do a lockdown, that's that stuff. You lock it down, then you can lock the content proper.
And E P D does a really good job on, as a tier one. They're down to five minutes. I know I'm in the shooting range. I can put about five thousand rounds down at five minutes.
Why did you put this idea up to be, to be open? Because people who are women keep their seats here.
I think if we're very, quite respectful of the environment, I think we've got here.
They're not out here. That's why we're making that.
Well, right now, nobody can hear us. I'm sure they shut the Zoom off and work this out. Okay.
The first thing they did was shut the radio up.
Well, let's let them get to that topic.
Correct.
We haven't gotten to the topic yet. We might need for someone to speak for us before they go to the next topic. Let them jump in. Be polite, quiet.
Well, let's think that. Let's think that. Discuss the discussion.
Right. Whatever.
Never.
I heard you say she's the.
Oh, no. We're pulling Portland. There's a Portland guy.
You know, let's just.
Just put our masks on.
I wish they did, man.
Do you remember that? So, we're back from recess, is everyone? Back for, for Laurel, or do we have a quarrel? So, we just, during recess, um, this is what we appreciate that people may not have known how to sign up to testify. So what we're going to do is we're gonna talk tonight about postponing voting on and discussing this policy. It's gonna, we're gonna remove it from the agenda, we'll make a motion. And that we really hear that people want a chance to, to get input, we'll do it at a, at a, at another date in a future meeting in June. And so we want to be sure that when you go to the website, you know how to sign up to testify and do it before a deadline, before the meeting. And if you have any questions, you can always call the district office if you're having trouble navigating the, the, um, the website. So I'm gonna turn it to Maya to make a motion.
I move to table policy K J B B, um, to be voted on on June twenty second.
We have a second, Alicia, so if Maya has moved and Alicia has seconded, do we have any discussion?
So you're only moving to vote, but not to discuss?
We don't. Um, I have, I'd like to ask you.
Yes, Maya has her agenda.
So, to clarify, I'm gonna presume that you all have some questions. Um, this is being suggested in response to hearing that people feel that it was difficult to sign up. We want to give people a chance to sign up. And so this is going to be tabled, which means we are not gonna have this on our agenda tonight. So on June twenty second is when we will return and have this as a topic. In the meantime, all of the process of signing up is, um, available on the website, and you can also email the district if you're having a hard time figuring out how to sign up. So, this is being done in response to hearing the community saying that you would like a chance to contribute to this conversation.
I just have one request.
Do you need, do you just sign up?
Yes.
Laurel, Laurel.
We're recognizing Laurel, um, we're back in session.
So my work every day is to recognize and, and understand that there are barriers to the systems that we have in play. You can also, and please, Sydney, correct me if I'm wrong, call the front desk, can someone just sign up? Other, I mean, or?
If, if you call, they can help you with it, um, but that's not.
Can, can they, if somebody doesn't have email, and there are barriers to only having one process for signing up, so we need to make sure we're providing a way, people when they call and say, I would like to sign up and talk at this meeting, so they can do that.
And if we get more than ten, then not everyone is.
Right. Well, I think it's a big topic to make more.
Is anyone else, I'm sorry, um, we're gonna.
Can I, can I, can I get into your question?
Let Laurel, let Laurel finish your comments.
So, we would like, we're gonna have to adjourn, or ask you to leave.
We're having a board meeting and we heard you, so we, we have to.
They would have to.
We need to come down, we will not take any discussion, this will be off the agenda until you have your notice, Laurel.
So, I understand that this is a sensitive topic, I have read all the emails, and I also would like, like for emails to be written with specific, um, alternatives, not just the hell with any kind of laws, because we have to follow the law, and everybody understands that, but specific alternatives that you would find acceptable, so we can look at this critically, because it's important. So please. Um, answer that, you can email the board, and we read, we all read these emails. Um, it's our job, that's why we do it. Um, so I understand that this is important, and that you want to be heard, and, um, I think it's very important, and I like to preserve our American process in the sense that we have a voice in America, which not every country has that voice. So please, follow this process. We also have to follow the public meetings law, so yelling out just will need that we, if this goes to this level here, we just have to adjourn, and we have even complete all the other business. Because our job is children, but I read in the emails, words that you are concerned about your children, and we're all concerned about our children, so please.
I just, I, one thing that's really hard to understand, and I only say this because I have said most of my time sitting over there and out here, is that we can't engage in a conversation now, and that is super frustrating, I understand. But that's why we are putting it to a, to a later date, so that you all, and, and on your way out, you can designate someone, you can say, you know, the guy with the suit is the one to speak for us. That's up to you all, but tonight, we don't want to go into recess again, and if it continues as a dialogue, which I totally get, is beyond frustrating, but it is the structure of this meeting. Um, so, while I want to answer your question, do we get any help?
No, no.
No, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, and, um, please, Laurel. Um, we don't, that way to have dialogue with the board is you can reach out to individual board members, you can do it through email, you can even suggest meeting with them, but at a public meeting, it's not, there's not a, a way, you know, a, a meeting that follows Robert's rules to have a public dialogue. So you can do that, and you would get, you can get our individual emails on the website, and our board email is, as you said, board@4j dot name dot edu. And that will get to all of us, and everyone does read them, even though everyone may not respond individually. So please do that, if you'd like to have a dialogue. And then I think, um, again, you'll be able to, as Laurel said, you could call, or you can email to sign up for testimony. Again, Monday before our Wednesday meeting, please do, and you'll see that this will be on the agenda on June twenty second.
I think it will.
Okay, let's call vote. All those in favor of, uh, Sydney, state your, um, motion, please.
The motion is to table policy K J B B until June twenty second.
Okay, and it's been moved and seconded and discussed, so all those in favor, say aye.
K G B B, thank you.
K G B B, raise your hand, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I seek ordinance, go ahead, just go ahead, yes, okay, passes unanimously, thank you. So, we are now, um, we are now moving to, I don't know that there are any employee groups here tonight.
Sabrina is.
Sabrina is, okay, yeah, perfect. We'd like to hear from Sabrina.
That's as far as we got.
That's where we are. Hi, Sabrina.
Good evening. I think if I could make any point on the agenda to speak, this would not be the time. I wouldn't make any other time, but that's okay. Uh, my name is Brady Orton, and I am president of the United Education Association. Later this evening, and you will hear more, through some teachers who have been leading the work of the E D A curriculum adoption process, along with the 4J instruction department, I want to share the E E A's appreciation for all the work that has gone into the process. The team of coaches, teachers on special assignment, and administrators who have facilitated the work, and the teachers and students who have headed the programs, all deserve our things. The work of curriculum adoption, like so many decisions in our district, is both messy and necessary. Necessary because our students deserve to work with educators who are continuously improving their practice based on current research in the science of learning. And messy, because teaching is an art, and educators are as unique as the students we serve. This artful, messy side is what creates joy in education. A healthy school district is one that is willing to embrace the balance between the science of educating and the messy joy of teaching and learning. Finding this balance is critical for retaining educators and helping students thrive, which are goals we've been talking about all this year. 4J must work to create this balance by doing three things. Provide professional learning opportunities for educators. The best professional learning is created with educators, and includes a mix of things everyone engages in and some individual choice about what we each want to focus on to improve our practice. E E A is appreciative of the level directors, equity directors, and staff admin who have invited collaboration with E E A this year in some of the professional development plans for the future. 4J must also create a daily and year-long schedule that allows educators time to build relationships with students, engage in meaningful collaborative peers, and do thoughtful lesson planning during the weekday, instead of on our own time at the expense of our own families and personal lives. Whatever tools may be available to allow flexibility and creativity in our schedules, we need to make use of. The last but not least, 4J needs to encourage a culture of professional autonomy within the structure of best practices. Provide the necessary resources, such as curriculum and programs that we've selected together, and then give educators the space to be creative, to be responsive to our students' needs, and find the joy that will help our students thrive. Let's be equal partners in this work, from the superintendent to the students, licensed and classified staff, principals, and district admin, we are all responsible for creating and maintaining this balance. Our best chance to experience and deliver joy for our students is through shared power and shared responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for board members who have, have some time to give comments. Who would like to be the first person tonight?
Who'd like to talk first?
Alicia.
Okay, first, thanks so much, committee, that was a lot of meetings, and they really work, and they really explored that budget deeply. And to also tell the teachers that, I know our date after tomorrow morning, you're going to work, I'm retired, I'm not, but I'm going on some visit, so, um, thank you for being here and sharing your voice. This week, Friday was the E E F dinner, it was a lot of fun, got to meet a lot of folks, great speeches, um, and wonderful to be with people in a celebratory way. I don't think I've been to an event like that for two years. Part of my assignments here is the instructional advisory council, and I had a chance to review the process for the 4J secondary social studies curriculum adoption, and also what we'll talk today, the language arts adoption, what we've heard. Regarding the elementary adoption, I just have some quick notes I want to point out, you already heard, um, she didn't talk about that, I thought it was, right? Um, at the instructional advisory, uh, council, uh, that was a week ago Tuesday, we went over the process, extensive, we went over the process and looked at how, um, how we met or didn't meet, um, the ARs, which I know are now administrative roles, or even that, how I remember. Uh, so they, uh, what, um, what was discussed was the fact that they went above and beyond to meet all the ARs, and that is, as it's outlined in the curriculum adoption. Quick, I'm speaking a little, we haven't always had administrative roles, we haven't always had a really clear process for following, um, curriculum adoption. Might for a source, um, but, uh, so we did do an outline a number of years ago, we did do a process, a policy, and we looked, one of our jobs was to, and see that we followed that process. They talked about the equity tool and, uh, the equity lens, and they talked about how it was used, um, throughout the process, and one way that they used it to adjust the process, um, using the equity lens was create information, a video, um, for information sent to every elementary parent in the district, um, and, um, that hope that the participation, um, at the evening in-person events, uh, hope, they would be that rather than the in-person event. Um, the first parent meeting they had, they had, um, fifteen people, um, who came to the English, and several came to the Spanish, and so they adjusted their way of doing it and did this video, and, um, they increased their community participation by four hundred percent. Four hundred percent. Teacher voices and feedback, um, I did hear over and over that that was, um, a core value, at least as it is through our process, and that they felt that that, um, was achieved, and hearing from the teachers in the room, they also felt like that was achieved. Uh, I liked this, the opportunity for creativity, the curriculum supports teachers with what to teach, and it's up to them to use their craft and their how to teach. I think that was, Curie Stamm, yeah, Curie Stamm, well, thank you for living. Thanks, a little bit more from her. Um, also, uh, moving on the charter school committee, I got to visit the village school, um, the other day, I don't know if I'll tell you, um, uh, it was fun to see their vision, if you haven't had a chance, for the physical space, which is good because there are so many hills, and I swear we all went up, I don't remember if we went down, we went up a lot, first. Yeah, you know, we had to push one of those times. Um, anyway, um, I appreciated seeing their outdoor classroom, it's dedicated to Howard, named our, and Howard is a friend of mine, I actually met him when I first started on the board, and he kind of appeared to me and said, uh, I want to talk to you about the village school. So I got to be here, and hear more about the village school, and, um, we do miss him, but the outdoor classroom is amazing. I got to visit a couple of classes, I learned, um, about, uh, understanding, um, data and what we hear, and how to understand what is real and what is fake, um, and also got to hear a bit about, um, heroes in Mexico, and heroes in Netherlands, and so whatever is, um, Mexico, I think they could stay because they made them a bar, I wanted to stay in the classroom and listen, um, they were very, really deep, so that was fun. Um, and, um, I want to say that the other thing I got to do was watch, open a kitchen, which, you know, is, um, kind of a catalyst for us and what we do, so that was fun. Um, I, uh, we were busy with interviews, and I didn't get to visit, uh, twenty vendors, not three vendors, um, not that, uh, and, uh, visited during school committee, but tomorrow I can go to the covert school. Yeah, I think that's my report, and I'll leave that, I mean, you guys know I always bet in the show, so, if you haven't known.
Thanks, who else? Kathy. And I'll probably just repeat my camera off, I'm apparently going to do that all of you, Dean. Um, and Alicia, to answer your question, my husband refers to me as bubble head curvy, so just, that's something I don't really know. Um, I want to take the signs, I acknowledge Afi Heritage Month, so it makes the month to recognize Asian-American Pacific Islanders in this country. Um, and I'll explain that one month of your designation less than, as I've said before, but as one Afi person, and now one or two, um, the word Afi didn't have to speak anyways. So, up until the pandemic, the Afi community in this country, in accordance to immigration statistics, was the largest growing community of any ethnic, racial, what I call the high ethnic categories. But as you know, with most communities of color in this country, we've had a very long drought, mostly overlooked history. Um, throughout schooling, we have maybe covered in one sentence, like, the contribution of Chinese enforced labor and the development of the West, maybe the Japanese internment camps, occasionally to get there, the aftermath of the Vietnam War. Um, as a country, we celebrate some obvious things like our contributions in tech and business, maybe this can be. Um, but even here in the West Coast, we're like, we're really covering other contributions, like the contributions of Afi farmers in developing agriculture in California, or that Pacific Islanders who are here, indigenous to the land prior to the establishment of the US. Um, to me, with social studies education, I think it's been overlooked with an overemphasis on testing and literacy and numeracy, uh, sometimes the only indicators or the only contributions that you need to live in a pluralistic society. Um, now, Eugene's had some amazing. Now Eugene's had some amazing social studies educators that are pushing against this narrative. Thank you, social studies education, when done well, it's meant to inform, it's meant to connect us to our histories, it's meant to connect us to the world. And really, it's meant to help dismantle some of the structures that have been put in place that have led to subversion, hierarchy, and most often assimilation. That's been extremely harmful to our heritage and those cultures. I think Eugene's making some strong strides in supporting our language immersion programs and Japanese-Chinese, really all language immersion programs. I think we need to continue supporting those. And brains development, I think we know that language is often a gateway to culture and just experiences that would otherwise have been closed off to people. For our communities who have been here in Eugene now for more than three generations, I think it's the most basic tangible acknowledgement of worth. For the teachers and staff who make those immersion programs viable, you guys are doing an incredible job. It's not easy. I know, I'm trying to raise two second generation bilingual Indian-American and American children here with very little communities to support me. So I've been relying on my educators, which are my parents. So my Indian immigrant parents, Indiana spoke to me only in Hindi to help me get a deeper personal relationship with my own culture. Having said that, I don't want to stop there and just pat ourselves on the back and say, well, you did a good job. Like this is where it ends. There's still so much more to do. I think as a board, we're looking at equity and inclusion in a more actionable way. When we continue on that path, like that means addressing things like the uptick in racist behavior since COVID. That means looking at and combating the, which of inclusive bias and unconscious bias that still exists. I think that's looking at like poverty indicators that say that some Afi communities are experiencing poverty at like weights twice as much as other Afi communities. Because surprise, we have all this same, I feel like I have to say that. Because I work in education development and in the education sector, we are often looked at the same. There's this very harmful myth of the law of the minority that still prevails. And honestly, it's used to pit us against other communities of color in very harmful ways, especially when it comes to things like Eugene might get. We're considered hardworking, highly educated, but most of all, I think they're looking at us as not disruptive. I can tell you right now, depending on to that last session. So for educators in the community, I ask that you see count when you see, do you know of your Afi students? That's hard to say. That means actively looking for signs of emotional distress, learning difficulties, you may become really good at pretending. Don't assume that you know what you think your Afi parents require or expect with their kids. And certainly don't expect skills and capacities based on time perpetuity, genetic lineage. I've been an Indian student who's struggled with math my entire life and I can't tell you how many times I've had to explain myself along with a math problem. Show you where, Curie. Yeah, so I'm essentially asking in this month of Afi Heritage Celebration that you're not looking at us as a demographic checklist. I can assure you that our cultures will find us, we have things that connect us, but our needs and requirements are no more different than a continent of two point five billion people within life. So yeah, please celebrate it, celebrate our cultures, but know us as individuals. Happy Afi Heritage Month, I practice saying that. Just for the record. Don't go away drunk. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Mike?
Mike. So as a member of the team that went to Memphis to do a deep dive into Superintendent Vailus Lynn Johnson, I want to share how informative meetings and conversations were. The time was beyond well spent and I look forward to having that same opportunity to do similarly with our other pre-finalists over the course of the next few days. I want to stop and thank all the folks in Memphis and Cardak time to share that insight with us. You were not only helpful, you made us feel valued and welcomed. Closer to home, I want to express my profound appreciation to the teacher or teachers making space for students to learn about our superintendent finalists and then encouraging students to put said learning into specifically focused action. The emails we are receiving with your recommendations are thorough and include the reasons on which your support and development kind of is based. Thank you and keep the emails coming. I hope more teachers and professors are students to do similarly. This morning, I had a different opportunity. Upon receiving a request from staff for board members to attend meeting this morning with Kelly. With Kelly staff, I eagerly accept it. The physical space in which students gather to learn significantly impacts the experience and success of their educational journey. It is safe to say that our students at both Kelly Hill School and Eugene Gockwood had had their experience severely compromised due to the state of the physical building space, which they call their schools. Collapsing ceilings, crowded hallways, lack of water access, inaccessible spaces, and so much time spent outside in the elements regardless of the weather. That means rain or shine, snow or hail, all of it. But the space is not only disrepair, it is overcrowded. Both disrepair and overcrowding impact programming and operations in a way that leaves our Kelly and YG students with an educational experience that is at a level lower than that which we expect for all our 4J students. This is in no way due to staff underperforming and exclusively attributable to the state of the campus at A. F. B. Howard Avenue. In fact, considering the setting, staff is performing near miracles, keeping their students engaged, learning, and connected. It should also not be overlooked that the understaffing that is occurring at high rates across the entire district is deeply felt at this site. Kelly and Eugene Gockwood absolutely deserve to be prioritized with not only our attention, but resources. They have been promised this over and over and it's time we deliver. At this morning's meeting, Superintendent Mandercar and Assistant Superintendent Vailor received a tremendous amount of detail regarding the extreme challenges facing the two schools relocating at A. F. B. Howard. At the end of sharing challenges, I was pleased to hear one teacher request that a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning be focused on the tangible options, including parameters that these two school communities have in front of them. Parameters were communicated as particularly important so as not to, and I quote, drain vigor of what is even possible. One given cost of the situation that was also highlighted is the normalization of the continuous adaptation to which we are subjecting our students and staff. The impacts of this constant state of adaptation on this generation of students and teachers and families are not yet known, but the concern about the inevitable impacts is at a high level. At the end of this meeting, I was particularly moved by teacher Tim Iverson's comment and would like to share his words with this permission. We need you to believe us. You wouldn't even need to be here if you would have just believed us. We need you to believe us. I want to amplify that sentiment and expand it into a call for action, a call for commitment. I'm going to say it again. We need you to believe us. As leaders of this district, I want those words to resonate in all of our ears as we make any number of decisions. It's not enough to seek out equivalent perspectives, folks and concerns. We need to also believe the people we hear from. I anticipate that along with believing, evidence of said believing through direct and meaningful action will lead us to increasing trust levels amongst our stakeholders. I've often said that transparency is the necessary ingredient for trust. And now I need to add believe in to the shortlist of essential ingredients. If we truly want to cultivate trust, if we truly want to be inclusive, if we truly want to be collaborative, if we truly want to stop the process of disenfranchisement, we need to believe our people.
So. We've been told several times and not recently, but pretty fairly recently, that increasing mental health supports in our schools isn't working, the staff aren't available. It's seemingly impossible because of lack of resource. It seems our recourse is to stay inside the box and risk at the very least, students with no understanding or ability to access, access help when they feel hopeless. Then the worst, we will continue to lose students to this stuff. We have we had educational professionals at the beginning of the school year asking for extra time and help. They knew that this year would be difficult for students returning and starting school for the first time. There are students that are starting school for the first time in second grade right now. There are high schoolers that never have a freshman year and are starting. I mean, anybody, why would remember the freshman year and how utterly the wilderness is? Imagine starting it in your neighborhood. I have, I have given the suggestion that is outside of the box and I, instead of using my words, I'll use my friend River Alon, who works at the silly place and is quite amazing. The, what, I'll say her words. Supportive life coaching offers an opportunity for young people to feel seen and heard. Have a space to discuss challenges, set goals, practice various life skills such as assertive communication, time and stress management, and boundaries. Coaching is ideal for young people who are not experiencing a mental health crisis but who do need support and encouragement. Coaching is a prevention effort that can help promote a positive school culture and help meet the needs of youth who need help but not a diagnosis. By working with experienced coaches, students can access support and develop skills without being funneled into the overextended mental health system which currently needs long wait lists and diagnosis. Coaches can work with existing school mental health providers and social workers to ensure that students are appropriately referred and directed to the right level of provider based on their needs. Coaching, coaches are also often very effective for short-term support such as helping students learn self-regulation, task management, and self-ethicacy. That's part of a wider network of community supports. Coaches represent an underutilized resource for promoting student wellness and success. I think about this here because in, as a district, I don't feel hurt. But I also, but I hear from educators that they need support, that this year's hard. There is a lot happening with our students' mental health and we can't disregard that that also means for our educators' mental health needs. There are ways to address this, but they are outside of the narrow scope of the way education usually addresses it. When we use mental health providers, mental health providers need to make a diagnosis. Whether that child needs a diagnosis or not, that is exactly how the system works. It must have one in order to continue to receive help and care, the coding, if you will. I would love for there to be meaningful movement on this. I understand the word life coach sounds very elitist and almost kind of strange to talk about. But coaching isn't strange. You can't tell, didn't make somebody behave. We do that now, it doesn't work. But you can coach somebody to, of the why and how and to get there. So other names that I'm suggesting are life advisor, life consultant, life mentor, life trainer, if you don't like the word coach. But really, it is that kid who feels hopeless and needs to have that conversation. And we have educators who don't have time, but I know they want to have that conversation with that child. They have somebody, the support that they can rely on that will talk to them. And if they need, if the child needs more, they'll get more. And if the child needs, needed to hear a pep talk and get back to the classroom, that can happen too. That's just one scenario, there's a lot to this. We need to think outside of the box because the box is hurting us right now. So I encourage this to be heard and we do something different. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurel. Michelle.
Thank you, Curie, for your happy cup. I appreciate it. Curie and I met with the equity directors this morning and we both want to be involved with trainings and discussions and equity work wherever we participate. And one of my reasons for doing that is because I like to figure out why people don't feel like they belong. And I feel like there's a lot about me. I wanted to elevate the Western State Center, they're known as RISAM. They, they work nationally to strengthen inclusive democracy, but they're based in Oregon. And you can find them at westernstatecenter.org. They've been developing lots of programs to shift cultures of acceptance and belonging. They've been doing it for thirty-five years. They're led by Eric Ward, I don't know if that name is familiar to you, but he had a strong presence in Eugene as well. Sydney has referred to the atrocities that occurred this weekend, multiple women. And I can't help but feel that those perpetrators, they had no sense of belonging. They didn't have anyone to talk to, they didn't have a place where they felt hurt. So if you go to their website, you can access resources to learn how to talk about conspiracy theories and bigotry and how to talk to your family and how to talk to students. I did a training in October twenty nineteen on confronting white nationalism and they have a fantastic toolkit. And you can access it online and it's helpful for all teachers or anyone who works with students to have access to this information and to use it. They've developed scenarios so you can practice. Because it's not just being fed information that you can just approach a person and and speak eloquently, they need to practice. So I really support this organization. Their approach is anti-gay and they encourage building connection and relationships. I'm really encouraged by the progress of the equity directors. Now they have a team with regional equity managers and district coordinators and they're building. And I guess the next step, I hope the next step is student involvement because students have a whole lot to say. And I also look forward to the start of equity committee meetings. I don't know when they're scheduled to start, but I'm anticipating that they will also be a huge contribution to our district.
Thank you. Thank you. So Gordon, you're, are you wanting me to make comments? I think you're it.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, there's too many important things, more than I can comment on, but I want to focus on, on one thing tonight. Board member Laurel O'Rourke has been a moral beacon for us in making sure that all of us see and address the reality of poor and working-class people in our community, including students, parents, and employees. As part of that, she's been the leading voice calling for the board to ensure that we're not paying anyone below poverty wages and specifically to guarantee that nobody will be paid less than eighteen dollars an hour. The living wage in Lane County is defined as eighteen twenty-three an hour for a single person with no children. I'm grateful for her leadership on this and support her completely in this. And the importance of this was driven home to me again this week when I received a letter from a former 4J educational assistant, yet another person who spoke on condition of confidentiality for fear of retaliation, who after years of working with 4J students with special needs, has left the district employment. Here's what she told me about why she left, quote, "I left due to the low pay and lack of respect. I loved my job, I miss it every day and I miss the students and staff and the feeling that I was really making a difference in students' lives. But the pay was so low that I was living on credit cards and couldn't continue to work there. This was the lowest amount of pay I've ever made in my life as a person with bachelor's degree. I was taking clothes out of the school donation bin at times. Sometimes due to my lack of funds and my clothing, I was mistakenly identified as a student by substitute teachers. If I didn't have a target card, sometimes I wouldn't have been able to afford basic items." We can't have people working in our schools under these conditions. That should be true for any employer, but all the more so for a school system which is trying to teach our kids about justice and democracy. Kids aren't stupid and they see what we do as well as what we say. If we're saying that inside the classroom, it's all about caring and community, but outside the classroom in the real world, it's pay people as little as you can. This makes us hypocrites, it hollows out our curriculum and teaches the wrong lesson to the kids we're responsible for. We haven't yet begun contract negotiations with the Classified Employees Union. But when we do, I will be supporting eighteen dollars an hour minimum as the least amount anyone at four J should make. And I hope my fellow colleagues on the board will do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, board members, now we're gonna move to the consent uh agenda, consent group. We have two items on the consent calendar.
I move to uh prove the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Michelle, so I moved and Michelle seconded. Any discussion? Laurel. It is my understanding that we have a lot of resignations on this consent agenda. I would love to understand that more. Is that, uh, no, does that question go to the superintendent? We have. I, I don't have it in front of me right now, but when I looked at it before, I saw that we had. An, too many. Sixteen resignations. As opposed to retirements and such. What, what are we doing to keep people here? What are we doing to um help people stay? Why is our culture? Bringing people away? I mean, there's a whole bunch of questions, so I thought I would just say. Why do we have too many resignations? So Laurel, can I make a suggestion? I think our item for action is accepting the resign, resignations and let's look at putting that on the agenda. Um, for information at our next meeting, you want to bring that up for that? Well, I have, I. I mean, I can't make people not re- resign, right? But I can notice and I'm glad at least I get to see this and say, I, I just shouldn't be happening without us knowing why. Michelle.
I think in one of the budget meetings, it was mentioned that there are exit surveys. And perhaps we could. Have an analysis of the exit surveys to hear. If there are specific reasons, or if they're the same reasons, or if they're, they're different reasons. We can make some connections as to why they're, they're dominating.
So we like some feedback and report including the exit, information from exit, you know, case studies. Maya.
I, I'd like to piggyback on that request and ask um to hear. Um, maybe over the last two years, how many of the folks who resigned have actually gone through with taking that exit survey slash conversation? It's telling if people choose to not do that as well.
Yeah, I'm taking notes and I wanted to summarize this when we go for our items for the, our next, for the future agenda items, so Laurel. Um, to your notes that I would like a uh, a low um. And it, I don't know what you would call it, but a way that people can state anonymously. Why they left, um, and like, how do you call it, a woo-hoo, I don't know what it's called in other places. Um, but it's a way you can just fill in online and you can, and you do not have to put who you are in order to do it. Any more comments about the consent agenda? Then let's vote on it. How many are in favor of, of uh passing the two items on the consent agenda, raise your hand?
No, I give it Matty's decision.
Gordon, okay, passes unanimously, thank you. All right, now we're on to items for information and we're gonna receive an update on the career technical education. Where we accessed now and I believe that's Andy Dai and Tia Holiday. I'm, I'm gonna do that. Just saying, okay, thanks, you're gonna do the whole thing.
Tia's giving care, somebody who's over this evening, so it's gonna be my. Like care's giving a screening study that has a copy of the presentation list. Included in the Word packet for those of you who are listening in the audience. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak, you know, the time has been constrained and your schedules have been really full, so this has been postponed for a little bit, so. When you have a handout ready here. I appreciate your assistance with. Technical aspect of the presentation. There we go. So the, as I understood at the time initially, there was a desire to give an update on where we were with our CTE programs. And that um. There was an interest in what we would do to improve programs. Moving in the future. So I'm gonna frame that conversation tonight really around uh ideal CTE programming, a phase of improvement using three general categories of graduation. Uh, the desire to offer, excuse me, to offer multiple pathways to high school graduation. Really focus on career where students have the opportunity to explore or prepare for high wage employment careers. Either straight out of high school or certification programs and post-secondary education opportunities. And a desire to really engage students in problems that are important to um our community. So one of the things that is covered about CTE programs is that CTE concentrators. Defined as students that get two or more credits in CTE pathways of study or more have a higher graduation rate. Um, I wouldn't suggest necessarily a cause and effect relationship, but consistently year after year, those students. That have two or more credits in the CTE pathway have a higher graduation rate. So. The first, the graduation, we know that if we have programs um that are. Uh, that benefit from robust communication to students and families as well as possible, programs that appeal to a broad range of students. Programs that offer core content, not just CTE content, logistics, math, science possibilities apart from the experience. Uh, that's very attractive to students and as it is right now, CTE programs that are available to students regardless of the school in which they attend. We don't have the same CTE programs in each high school. All right, in an ideal setting, we would um offer multiple pathways to graduation, like I said earlier in the vision. Our CTE programs connect students to high wage, high demand jobs if they wish to enter with little or no certification required beyond high school. Uh, that, that the training that they receive is relevant and recognized by industry is what they would need in order to be competitive in their application. And the students actually leave our programs with those skills. And ideally, uh, we have programs that, that in which students' learning is connected to issues that they care about within their own community. Students learn through the process of becoming a positive force in their community and that the learning that they experience is relevant and applied. Not necessarily exclusively text-based. So then we move into um what we believe we need to do in order to get to those ideals. Uh, we absolutely need to expand communications so that families know what is available within their schools and across the district. When we survey students, we have students indicating in their junior year that they were unaware that CTE programs existed in their schools or won't exist in other schools. So that's an area where we need to improve. By doing that and having CTE programs that appeal to a broader range of students will have more proportionate representation. And although it will require significant logistical gymnastics, we will um. We believe that our students will benefit by having um easier access to CTE programs in the schools that are not their neighborhood schools. In terms of truly preparing students for, for careers, uh, we want to continue to determine the programs that we offer to the skills that industry says that students need. We may at times believe that we are up to date, uh, but we need constant feedback from industry because industry changes at a significantly faster pace than education does. We have bolstered consistency of systems, um, so that we can help teachers plan and support, predict, speed and change. Those with a full-time job don't have lots of spare time to go out and uh talk shop with industry professionals. What we absolutely need to increase access is to work-based learning, not necessarily just classroom learning. But um internships and exposure to workplaces that increase their sophistication as to those from novice to intermediate to advanced levels of their pathway. Then the last is community, we absolutely need to make community partners an integral part of our process. We have lots of very evolved um community agencies that, that know at a regular level the community issues that, that Eugene's Greenfield faces, that Lane County faces. And we need to find a way to remove barriers to innovation, uh, and, and community participation, schools will be difficult to work with at times. And then we, we need to, to work with students so that they become more skilled and excited about emphasizing community issues. That they want to make contributions and find a way to work that into our education programs, in our CTE programs itself. So, this is a graphic representation um of our existing situation. We, we, we know that the industry and community partners are more closely aligned to each other than we are to now. I don't want to suggest that we don't have connection to community partners or industry. Industry and community partners are just more closely aligned. Uh, if we're not consistently taking advantage of partnerships, partnership opportunities. We won't be able to engage in projects that community partners uh have identified. And that industry has the skills to, to help solve, if interested in helping solve it. Ideally, the, the, the sweet spot is when there is consistent, uh, very close connection between. The school district, which is really skilled at developing teaching and learning activities and the industry and community partners who um identify problems and, and have the technical capacity to solve it. The transformation process, again, just graphic representation, we need to take better advantage, we would like to take better advantage of the connection between industry and community partners. Have open dialogue so that they can help us identify projects that we have the capacity to, to address. That we listen to community partners about what they see as the key defined outcomes. That we get to do what we do best, which is develop a curriculum and a learning experience for students. So that then once delivered and we get feedback from students about their experience and feedback. From community partners and the industry about whether or not students actually had the skills they were looking for. And were we able to deliver on the outcomes that community partnerships were looking for. And if that feedback loop is consistent and isn't broken, then I believe we have a process whereby we should be constantly improving the smooth experience and our, our quality of our CTE programs. And that's really uh where we are with our future build program. Where we're building a house, by no means do I think we have a finely tuned machine, this is the first house that we're building in quite some time. But the idea is that community partners who can address dimensions of the homelessness problem are doing what they do best. On construction, in industry is doing what they do best with home construction. And we're allowed to engage in that project doing what we do best, which is teach students, provide quality educators who can develop a learning career. And then the next several slides, which I, in the interest of time, I won't just read to you, but if you take a look at the packet, you can see. The individual programs of study that are at each of our comprehensive high schools. We do have some students from, from say their neighborhood school that are participating in a CTE program at a different school. Again, Future Bill is a perfect example, but it's the exception and, and not the rule you want, you want to change that scenario. And uh, I believe at this point, I'm more than happy to answer any questions, so come on in.
Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions in the presentation? Laurel. It'd be great if we had it identified, um, how many people leave school with an actual certificate of some sort to be able to show where. That, of what they can do and which ones are absolutely, I mean, looking at this, a lot of these are geared to um move into college. And that has been our, our history here and I realize we're trying to change it. But it'd be, we really, I would assume we must have that information.
Uh, we do, at this point in time, we don't uh. We do not have industry recognized certification in all of our CTE programs, but that is absolutely what ODE is pushing for and what we're in conversation um about how to do. And the idea is that while a student, um, to your earlier point, while a student may decide to go into college as a result of their experience in a CTE program. That they're designed to get people entry level jobs in the high wage high demand fields. There may be some certification, some ID, so they could be better prepared to go into an internship, say, or a apprenticeship program in trades. But, but it is not um dismissing the importance of college, but they're not, our programs are not designed to get people into university. It's, it's job training, for sure. But Julie, I'm, I'm knowing how many people receive the certificates and got the information that you showed.
Kiri, I saw that question and for you, this may be, and some of the information you've already shared, but. Do you think it's like how the programs are decided to like which ones are going where or is it through student choice, is it through things? And if like for the ones that you're picking for next year or when this is decided, like what is the decision process?
Sure, uh, to be honest with you, they're pretty stagnant over time. Um, there's not a lot of churn in terms of which programs are, are available at a school year after year. CTE programs um require people with a lot of industry experience and, and a talent outside. Sometimes you can find multiple folks who are interested in leading industry, say, computer science, in coming into teaching. So many of our CTE programs right now are just enhancements of programs that were in existence prior to our effort to really focus on CTE. We have added things like construction technology um this next year, based on feedback from students and community. We're gonna attempt to add health occupations at North Eugene High School, for example. Um, we're, we're gonna be engaging in a process by which we're asking students, if, if. If you're not interested in what's offered at your school or other schools, what would interest you? And to see what can we reasonably um support in terms of CTE over the long term. I believe I answered all of the elements of your question, there isn't something?
No, I'm, yeah, nothing, we're good.
Or Maya.
I have um two questions, uh, so I'll do them separately, but I don't want to forget them.
Okay.
I need to say that out loud. Um, my first question is kind of specific, so if you don't have an answer to it, I'm happy to get that later. Um, I've heard a rumor that somebody has been hired for the Kids Down South position. But I noticed that there's not a CTE for that listed. So I'd love to know if that's gonna be reinstated or if that is gonna be run as a program that's not technically CTE. I know the teacher has to have a certain. Component to their license for it to be technically CTE.
Yeah, they, they have to get CTE certification indicating that they have an adequate amount of industry level experience. This is a certain number of hours with uh, I believe it's eighteen hundred, but I can do you a second. And I'm not certain about the, whether or not somebody's been hired, we can get back to you.
I would love to hear about that.
Sure, uh, preschool and childcare programs can, may or may not be CTE.
Right.
But uh, they should still seem. but they should still see, will see the same level of support.
Gotcha. I I appreciate that. I'm just curious about the designation.
Sure.
So my second question, and I apologize if I ask this. I'm wondering, and I was thinking along the lines of what Laura was asking with college. I'm wondering, are we reaching out to local unions to get information for students to get involved in apprenticeship programs, similarly to how we share about scholarships to those that like school?
Sure. Um just beginning the process, quite frankly, um we hadn't done, we hadn't had programs uh for a considerable amount of time that that local unions were interested in
Okay.
uh or or had had industry experience in. We absolutely want to do that. We believe we'll be better prepared to do that when we demonstrate um that we can pull off something like building a house and have a sustainable program that works with industry. The idea is absolutely to help create pathways for students to pursue apprenticeship program globally, even if that's something that is.
Okay. And and even if we, I would encourage us that even if we don't have those things in place, that that's just folded into our career center counseling that happens so that people know that even if they never demonstrated an interest in twenty years in eleventh grade or that might be impactful for them when they're figuring out what's next.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um Gordon has a hand.
Thank you. Um I have three questions, and unlike Maya, I'm just gonna give them to you all at once and and in whatever way makes sense. And they're all, they're all related to the construction program. So one is, um what would it take for us to move on to a bigger program of building tiny houses in in bigger numbers beyond the 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 first two houses that we're building are fantastic, and I'm so glad to see that. But is there a way that we could um could expand that? The second is, um I mean, I've always been interested in classes that are that somewhat straddle the line between working with your hands and working with your brain or like going to college and something else. And construction is one of those things where we could teach construction and math, we could teach construction and design, we could teach construction and homeless policy. And but we need to have, my my understanding is that who we've been able to get so far is somebody who's from the outside, who's great at teaching construction skills, but is not, you know, those other things aren't really their thing. And it, what would it take? So this is my what would it take question to find some way to either have a team of teachers that we could have classes that cross over between those kind of things. And the last thing is, how would we have to change schedules that to make it realistic for students to participate in CTE programs that are not at their home schools? Because I, off the top of my head, I would guess that might mean you have to spend like a half a day a week or a day a week at a at a campus that's not your own, which seems like it's impossible for the most part. And so may and maybe these things are like too far in the future to have answers to, but those are my questions.
Sure. Um I'll give it a attempt and you'll let me know if I miss an important part. So how might we um grow the program to scale so that we're not necessarily just building single-family residential homes, but maybe smaller reductions on a larger scale? That is part of what we're doing. We're working with, and I won't remember the name of the project here, it's over on Roosevelt, but there's a desire to build um at least something, I think, of sixteen hundred tiny homes on on plotland. And we see that either as a primary focus or experience that a student has as they go from novice to intermediate. So there's one example. I think us building up to scale so that we have multiple groups that can do that is part of the evolution of our program. We are actually working on ways in which we can incorporate core content uh where a student can earn math credit, mathematics, construction mathematics, geometry. Um also English language arts, we've hired a teacher who has multiple certifications and a background in residential home construction to work alongside the person that's gonna primarily teach construction technology so that they can together build a program. And this is part of the answer to the third question. They can build a program that will allow a student to take a two-period block or spend their entire afternoon and not have constraints on their schedule where they need to also have an English language arts class or also have a mathematics class. Um ideally, what we would love to see is multiple programs of study being able to crowdsource a particular problem. An example would be on the Future Build program, we've got a group of people who are actually on the construction side. Culinary arts could be working on the food truck side. The folks who are there, we can have the videography programs and the the digital art programs who that are making documentaries and telling the story. Storytelling is a huge part of community engagement, and that would be a great opportunity for students in a different program of study to um address a dimension of this one project. And I I do believe that once uh we we have some projects with opportunities that are off-campus, bigger and more complex, that engage students in in big community problems, that's absolutely gonna be something that we need to do. I do believe that um that scheduling logistics are one of the things that get in the way of us being able to make the CTE programs that we have available to students that are at different high schools. That should be, or rather will be, part of our conversation about what can we do to minimize the barrier that the schedule presents and how can we continue to stack credit opportunities, so to speak, so students can more easily spend half of the day in a different school or half of the day at a work site and that not negatively impact their ability to earn the credits that they need in order to make progress towards graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I think given the time, this is a, this is a subject I think we'll want to come back and about because it's such a growing subject. Um so we'll probably have you back to talk about it and probably if there are other questions, we could email them to the superintendent and get them answered.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there anything that works to hire somebody who is specifically working to, I mean, most of the programs out here go on to college to be able to be viable programs. So do we have somebody whose main focus and job is to build up our CTE program?
We do.
And what does Callie do?
Uh essentially, yes. I mean, every position has other duties as assigned, but Tia Holiday, who was gonna be here tonight, she's the college and career readiness administrator. Her responsibilities include um a strong focus on CTE. We did have another teacher that we lost this year, so instead of um hiring that person, we actually just established a partnership and a contract with Connecticut Lake County, uh Lake County, who is really, really good at establishing relationships with industry partners. And the idea being let's let
That's tech.
Not just tech, they also do manufacturing, design, construction, um pretty pretty broad set of partners that they have with which they've established internships.
I I mean, I've I've had conversations with them and they said their their work is mostly with people on college.
We hired Laura, right?
They were at a, they were table in somewhere and I had a conversation with them, so I don't know if we can be like.
They've grown that program significantly, and I think some of the tech jobs even were right out of high school. So you know, we can send some information.
I I just, I guess my frustration is like we, like a lot of things I see in our district, the need is now at such a level and it hasn't been addressed before now, per se. Not per se, it hasn't been, we don't have it. My my kids have never been told about this, you haven't mentioned that. Um that I'm, we're at a point where we need a lot more. We need somebody who's like a czar of CTE instead of somebody who also has to do everything as well. And who we, and that we're budgeting and putting a lot into this. And what I'm hearing though is our focus is still, though I first view, don't think I have it, that we're trying to change this. But our focus is still a lot of the mainstream do this, and then you can go to college, or then they do more. And I want people to graduate, be able to make money. I want to see welding. I want to see electricians. I want to see the what industry is clamoring for and not just, okay, you can do this and go into um HVAC, and then after you do the HVAC thing, if you get in, then you will make money, enough money. And I, we have such high needs and we have a third of our students who stick that you don't want to go to college. And yet they're referring the key period is when you go to college. And I I I want the balance to be there, like when we were talking, I want to, I guess, an education for our staff because I can tell you my son, who graduated now, has dreams being a computer designer, not a designer, he's gonna kill me. Don't bring him to the lesson, any of them. But he wants to be, he wants to design computer games. Yeah, programmer of computer games. And he he has a disability. He has and in his IP meeting, the the his psychologist said, you, you just made my coffee. This is wonderful. You'll be able to make my coffee someday. And I'm just like, my son has real dreams. And you know, and making coffee doesn't pay rent. So I I I guess you you can probably hear my passion is where it's gotten to a point that we have to do so much that I really want us to budget for, and I want to be told what that budget needs to be so I can support the work that I think you want to do. And so we can know that there's somebody who can, and somebody like staff, that they're doing this and it's not just more that it's your job along with all the other things that you do. And and Tia, who's great, like she could be our czar when we have staff that helps execute this. I'm not saying it's all you have to do. I'm just saying, I want, there's a, I don't want to be sexist.
No, I hear you. And I mean, sincerely, but what we want to do, um schools for quite some time have given essentially an exit ticket, and that's the exit ticket that you need to get into college. And that's not the exit ticket that everybody wants or needs. So we we need programs, not for unintelligent people or incapable people or unmotivated people, to people who have a desire for their life. Um that does not necessarily include going to a two- or four-year university, doing a job.
I'd I'd also like to see local government as part of that, those those, the Venn diagram. Because we are, I know from my past, we're we're creating our own homeless population. We have the data to show that. And that is because people can't support themselves and we know the economy makes it impossible unless you're making a sizable amount of money to afford your own place or even with your mates, right? And harder with everything else that's with none of COVID. Um so and having partnerships means you get also, hopefully, this is how I like to say it, uh we shouldn't argue, but then you get money to help with these programs from state, county, and city because they have a vested interest to work on this as well. And if the dad is there, it the collaboration, which I like to say I'm a radical collaborator, is that we give them all at the table and we we think outside of that box, I hate, to get to the to the funds to do this work. And so if we could invite them to do, be part of this, I think um there's a real there's a very real chance that this could happen.
Great. See you taking notes. That's ready, and we will get that. So I'm gonna move us on to the next topic, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the next item for information is on the North Region planning for eight fifty Howard. So Superintendent Vanderfoss and and Associate Superintendent Wagner. So uh we have, Brooke and I have visited both YG and Kelly now. And what I'm gonna do is ask Brooke just to go through our original plan, which they have some changes. But we also heard that Maya said that we would meet with the staff tomorrow morning at Kelly and they had another meeting planned that their principal felt like it was important for upcoming um planning for the summer that they hold that meeting. So we won't be going in tomorrow. I just wanted to make sure I went full circle with the comment you made earlier. So if Brooke, you would go through what our North Eugene plan or the committee that needs to authorize sometimes, maybe try to make up a ballot committee, and then the outcomes of the two meetings that we've gone to and our next steps. Um, good evening. Um we want to say at the beginning, right around the first one, April, um in my, one of my roles is to support instruction, was asked to um come back in and support the eight fifty Howard um address and situation of both the co-located schools. And Sydney and I have been meeting with the, in the month of April and May, the North Eugene Regional Steering Committee, which includes two teachers from YG, two teachers from Kelly, both of their building administrators, staff from facilities, instructional staff. And we were able to have some in-depth conversations about receiving feedback from both staffs at the regional steering committees, made some plans for the spring that included dialogue happening back and forth um through the staff representatives. And we were able to have back-and-forth meetings where we met as a steering committee, asked some questions, they went back to their staffs, some of them said, doable, understood, and had a staff meeting. How would you like, the request came back that they would like Sydney and myself to come out to their buildings. We then did another iteration of meetings because we wanted to make sure that voices um could be and feelings could be shared in a way that um could be authentic. So both staffs asked that we meet with them separately, and then both staffs asked that we could come back and meet together. The other thing that we brainstormed was, once we were done interfacing with the staffs, we would do an anonymous survey, so people who may or may not feel comfortable speaking at a meeting in one setting or another have the opportunity to provide feedback and ideas and brainstorming. So the outcomes that we are looking for, or what we, let me preface that first by saying that the staff also felt it was really important that they have time to process together and requested that we, and one of the things we want to honor is that we know we have parents and community members who want to give feedback. And it's really important that we connect with staff so they have that opportunity to give that feedback without necessarily feeling any type of external pressure. And so we, in our steering committee, plan to connect with communities at both schools in June. And one of the things that we want to do is take the information and the feedback that we receive there to individual staff meetings plus the survey, and that can help guide us as we move um into community engagement. All of this was discussed and talked about multiple times with the regional steering committee. The other thing that um we will be doing at the combined meeting that I've spoken about a couple of different times this morning is really thinking about, here are some of the parameters we know as a district, and here are some ways that we can dream about how we can look at the options that we have um and how the staff wants to work together. I think it's important that um we wait and hear the survey, anonymous survey feedback too, before we um move forward with the community piece just because we want to make sure again that voices that might not feel comfortable speaking in front have that opportunity to give that feedback anonymously. So this, we have another meeting scheduled as a steering committee in maybe May twenty-sixth. May twentieth, that's right. That's when we're gonna go back and meet with both staffs and go through a process around the parameters and some of the, some brainstorming about what is possible. And then we will um on the twenty-sixth of May, maybe, back in the steering committee to do a little bit more planning for the community engagement that we'll do in June. And the idea is that we would take this information and continue to have this back and forth with the steering committee as we get ready to um get back to school in the fall. We know that options on the table could be anywhere from both schools staying co-located, um one of the schools moving locations, but nothing will happen next school year. So it's really an opportunity for us to engage in authentic um. So it's really an opportunity for us to engage in authentic, um, transparent back and forth dialogue with the staff. We were able to, um, repeat Maya's report, but there were things that were in Maya's report that we have, um, obviously taken note of and will be working on those things on the side that don't necessarily have to do with the process about co-location, but just things that we can do more immediately that can help alleviate some of the pressures in that building, um, staffing concerns. There's some, um, things that we might be able to do with the schedule that could alleviate some of the, the stress that both staff have shared with Sydney and I have to do separate staff meetings. I think, and those dates were in the memo. For my information, I've shared last Friday.
Thank you. Are there any questions? My.
Um, I have a couple of questions. I guess one of the questions that I have that, uh, I even know staff and parents have been implying about, and I think that maybe Gordon has brought up is, who is going to be ultimately held responsible for the decision as to what happens? Not next year, but the year after. Um, and, um, my second question is, is it a board decision? Is that a superintendent decision? Um, and then my second question is, uh, the more short-term fixes like staffing, um, you know, we heard about leaks and things like that. And, and you mentioned, uh, schedule creativity. And those going to be in place before the end of the year? And I ask that because one of the reasons we asked for this, or I asked for this to be on this meeting is that there is a sense of urgency I'm hearing from YG families in particular about what their program's gonna look like next year in terms of viability for the long-term future. And having a lot of things up in the air is, is impacting families' decisions to possibly choose to leave. I think that we have talked about finding out what the numbers are like officially now for mobility away from YG. Um, I'm not sure if that is ready or not, but, um, so, so I'm just curious, those two things. Who's ultimately responsible for making the decision? And secondly, the short-term decisions, are they going to be put in place in time before June? Let's say twenty-second, because I think that's the last date before in the building.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Okay. But then, that is a little late for the families.
Well, I can give you some, I'm gonna ask the clarifying question, my second question.
Sure.
When you say in place, do you mean communicated or do you mean like a change of schedule that would happen in June?
No, I don't, I don't anticipate changing without schedule.
Okay, I just wanted to double, like, information about inquiry staffing and information about maybe some of the potential schedule adjustments that could. And I'm.
Like, in a form that is further devout than just, these are ideas, some things we could do. Like, we are committed to doing these things. I know schedule has to be finalized and things like that. And YG's gonna have a different schedule in order to accommodate those newly packed hallways. Um, it'd be great for families to know that before the year wraps up.
Yes, that would be the plan. I, I mean, and I wanna be, because when people listen to this, they might think, oh, something's been decided. Nothing has been decided, we received feedback.
Yeah.
And some of the feedback from both staffs was, can we be creative with our scheduling? Um, that could include when school starts and stops. Um, that could include creativity within scheduling, passing times, those types of things. And then obviously, um, the, and I need to do some work behind the scenes around their staffing. But we were able to, even after the meeting, I was able to clear something up with administration about, um, some things on their staffing plan that they weren't super clear about that is in addition of staff number that they thought they were losing that they're not gonna lose. That's just one, a couple of examples. But there'll be some more between now and then to look at their staffing, prioritize any of the, the things that there were shared this morning. And then, um, there'll be some conversation probably Friday, because it's Wednesday. And then steering committee next Friday. Um, and then how is this moving back from the staff? So the, the plan would be that we would communicate that with staff and with families prior to the year ending.
And then my first question, which was, I'm gonna let the superintendent answer that question.
Okay. Well, it would have to be both the board and superintendent. The superintendent works on program moves, but if it costs money, then we have to go before it would cost too much money, which they would. They would probably at the point where it would need to come here. So program moves are superintendent leadership, but it will cost money. So we'd have to come to a request.
Yeah, before I give up my turn, um, I just would like to advocate for, I know the whole district is understaffed. Um, and, and I would just like to advocate for, for looking at staffing through the equity lens and prioritizing that particular site with, um, folks as they come in. You know, I've spent time in that hallway, for example, in the midst of passing time. And it, it's significant and it means that teachers don't have those few minutes to either meet the students or, or to go to the bathroom or any other things because they're out there trying to keep their students safe. So I just wanna advocate for them being prioritized. I think, well, hopefully, in your thoughts.
And Gordon has the hand up.
Uh, thank you. And I will again just lay out a bunch of things from being far away. Um, first, I, I also think we need to treat this with urgency. I've met with, um, a few families a week or two ago. And I know that there are already families choosing to send their kids to different middle school because of the state of things there and because we haven't been able to resolve what's, what's gonna be happening. Um, so I think that, that creates urgency to us figuring this out. I also know that when this first happened, we had an agreement that, um, staff at Kelly and YG would not, and especially at Kelly, would not be cut even if enrollment fell because we knew that would create a kind of downward spiral where you, you lose staff, the offerings are worse, more people decide to leave and it puts the school in a, in a, um, very unstable position. And I think we need to be, continue doing that. And I know that that will involve a, a kind of equity funding above and beyond with the, with the normal, um, staffing for funding would be just based on enrollment. Um, as part of the urgency, I know I'm, I'm a member of this committee and as was Mary Walston. Uh, we now only have one board member. I know that Maya has been involved in a lot of this. And I would like to ask that she be added to the committee, um, to take the, fill the spot that Mary Walston had been holding. I also think we need to add parents to the committee. We talked about this at the last meeting and I had thought that it was uncontroversial. So I don't know if it, you know, just hasn't happened because everybody's doing a million things. And then I think we need to clarify the role of the committee. Because we, we, you know, really, and when we're talking about Kelly and YG, I know there are people who may be, um, reluctant to speak out for all kinds of reasons as, as you alluded to, Brooke. But I think our, our bigger pattern is people speaking out a lot and then, uh, nothing happening and getting, you know, getting demoralized and stopping to participate. So we can't ask people to participate in a process where their voices might be meaningless or, or powerless. So we need, I, I think we just, I, I understand what the superintendent said. Program moves are superintendent decision, spending is a board decision. But I think we need to map out a little more, okay? What's the exact process? Who does this committee report to? Where, where do its recommendations go? And what's the timetable for that? And I, I would just say in general, I've, um, we received a bunch of emails on this, but from one parent who suggested a set of principles about how to move forward that I think makes sense. So the first is to be clear about the role and powers of the planning committee and where that goes to. The second is to add parents as a permanent part of the committee. The third is to have the monies that were promised in the last bond, uh, for the, for the program moves, including YG and Kelly, to be, um, to be made available. And the fourth is to make sure that we're addressing the needs at YG and Kelly as part of the next bond. And I assume that's a discussion that we have to have as a board. But, uh, I, you know, however we got here, we got here. But I think we're in a situation where we've asked people to, to take on a burden and we've put people in a situation that is not solvable with the amount of money that we have. It's improvable, but I don't think it's solvable. And we really want to make those schools, um, vital and flourishing. And I think we need to add more money to that and, and make that part of the next bond. But so that's a conversation for down the road, but I think it's an important conversation. Well, quickly, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Laurel?
Well, I would, I would propose that we vote to add, um, money to the committee. And because what I, I get frustrated is that we don't have a vote and then things don't happen. So if we make the vote as a board, it has to happen.
I don't think it has to be a vote. Maybe we could, I mean, this is a.
What? It's your decision.
Yes, it's, um, my decision. And I, I wanted to also just see if some of our new members wanted to take some of those extra on the committees. They might feel overwhelmed and if not, you might, I mean, I would like to just offer that. Because, um, it was vacated by a previous board member and our new board members don't have any committee assignments, so.
Yeah, but this, this is, so the frustration I have with all of this and coming on here is this, this has been talked about all year. It's been a mess all year, it's still a mess. So we, so while I love our new board members and they can do this, I also feel like you have a, you have a board member asking to put somebody on it who's already been part of this discussion. And I think with a lot of things, it could be any board member. And I, but I think we need to absolutely show the public, the teachers, the parents, students, that we're paying attention and we're doing our due diligence. I mean, have it been done?
I'm gonna need board run that one, like.
Okay, next, I'll, I'll shake her head at this point.
I don't even know what the committee thought.
Yeah, yeah.
So she's center of homework, she's center of homework and.
I'll give up some of my committee. Right, okay. Louis, can I just, so is that something you're willing to do, Maya, with your other responsibilities?
I've been asking all year to be on that team, so yes.
Okay.
Then why don't you just say you're on it?
And Judy, can I just ask if we can, um, make a decision about adding parents to the committee?
I, well, I have to then defer. We didn't set up that committee. I believe this was a superintendent's committee, not a board's committee. So I just want to ask the superintendent since she did set up the committee, Gordon.
So when we talked about it and we wanted to add the parents after the staff, um, were fully heard. So we're not opposed to adding the parents. It just was, um, best step-by-step process. And, um, and I know that you've been unavailable a couple of times and I know it'll take minutes. So I wrote that was what we did talk about it and we were going to add after the staff was fully heard. So, um, the plan is to add a couple of parents.
I guess I would, I would just, I, I don't know if that's some, a request from the staff. I know they were asked to, they asked to be heard. I, I haven't heard staff saying they need to complete their input process before parents should be involved. Uh, if that's true, I'd like to know. But I also, and this is kind of, you know, somewhat for the superintendent and more for the board. Like, this is part of the frustration. I know this was a committee that was established by the superintendent. But the question, is this a committee that reports to the board? Is it a committee that reports to the superintendent? Does it report to both? Because if this is a, a committee that partly reports to the board, then we also should be deciding who's on the committee, who we want to get input from. And I feel like it, it, it's nobody's fault, but it's never quite been defined. And so it flip flops around and makes it hard to make progress.
I don't think we ever established it as a standing board committee. We have board reps on it. And we, we're interested because this is a goal of ours, so we asked for a report. But it is, it was not a committee that we had established for. So I don't flip flop, but we do want input. And this, that's my response. We can talk about changing that in the future, but that's where, that's where it is.
Okay, and the, and the question about whether the staff have requested the parents not be involved yet? I don't know, Sid, if that's something you can answer?
We discussed it, never agreed. So I, I'm, I just totally talked about it, that we wanted to make sure that we heard from all, all of the staff before we added parents to a meeting or meet with parents.
And I was a part of staff members who had requested that privately.
Thank you.
Laurel, Laurel.
So, um, in light of this, I, I think we should vote to have a joint superintendent and board committee that reports as well to the board. And that we ask, I, I'm very uncomfortable with some people asking for their nots. We have the people involved and we've heard that there are people that do want to be involved and we do have a history of not allowing voice from the community. Um, we are trying to change that culture. So I would like to, um, motion that we change the, the nature of this committee and make it a board and superintendent committee, which I know that is not always done, but we can change that as a board.
Uh, Alicia.
So I appreciate, um, where, where you're going. I, I just want us to, uh, think because if it's a board committee, there was extra rules.
Yes, I want oversight.
Well, not so much oversight, it's, yeah, anyway. So if you want to motion that, I, I will just speak against it because again, I don't want to make decisions. Like, if you want to motion it for a future date, where we talk about what that committee would look like or a board committee or, or a, um, I'd be more interested. But it makes me nervous because we haven't really talked about what that would mean right now. What it would mean.
So the way we do things is we don't, it's in a, and it's in our board agreements that we don't just say we're not going to do it to try to influence the vote of the rest of the board. We have a discussion first. So, um, so the way to do this is to have a discussion. And if it doesn't pass, then it, then we have a, we, we work on this at another time. Or we decide to, to, um, amend the motion.
So Laurel, I'm gonna say, so we're an item for information. This was an item for information, it wasn't noticed as an item for action. So if you want, can I just finish my saying? If you would like to make a motion to move it tonight to an item for action, um, that you could, you could make a motion to do that. But, um, or maybe at our next meeting that we could get information.
Well, the, the, the problem with this is this is a massive, this isn't an item. This is a whole problem that has needed definite leadership and has not had it. So we need to work on it and figure out solutions. So, okay, I motion to make the, this one part of it an item for action because there's many parts of this. And so just saying, say, you're turning this whole thing into an item for action is not accurate. That's what I like to say. And I'd also like to say, I'm asking to create process where there's oversight and then it has to go to, part of it will have to be noticed and be, uh, also public. So people can, there, if choice, there may, follow-through needs to happen because our number one problem is we don't have follow-through.
Uh, we didn't add this as an item for action at the end of the meeting. We could vote to add it. Again, it's, we haven't had a chance to discuss it, to look at it, get input from the, even the Kelly or YG community to see if they even want this to happen. So it feels like, again, we're pushing something that's not transparent to make a motion tonight. And I'm not even sure. So I just, I, um, would like to end the item of for information, move to items for action and we can.
Did you just throw away what I said?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, let's move it to the item for action, which is next on our agenda.
I thought we were gonna vote.
Okay, well, we can vote on this. So I, I, I don't know where to put it in the agenda. This is very unprecedented. We're under items for information, right now we're not on our agenda. And to move something to action is just not transparent and it's not following the system. So I'm just, I'm frustrated because I don't know. It does, it feels like we just keep changing our process.
I, I would like to know other board members' opinion on this. Um, we, if, if, if other people do not want, I mean, really the process is for me to do a motion and for other people, for it to add this as an item for, um, action. And it's one small item for action to help this process is not the topic of. is not the topic of the North and the address company needs.
Um, I, so, other board members have comments on this?
Can you say?
Alicia, and then Maya, were you reaching?
Yeah. I, I feel Laurel's passion. And I know how frustrated it is that things have moved this quickly, so we're like, I'm looking forward to factoring myself now on the committee and we'll be getting reports. Again, and I'm not trying to persuade, but it is my concern that sometimes items that report to the board are less effective because of the constraints. I could be wrong, but I can't agree on what all, they all are. So I'd be curious to find out what they all are. I would like to give Maya the chance, I know she's at one of those meetings, but to come and see after hearing what those constraints are, what we think and have that conversation, what we think is the best way to move it. Because I, I agree with Laurel, you gotta, you gotta, you know, give it a sound, we're getting more I can commit, uh, to give you some things now. So that's my two cents.
So I see Maya and Gordon both, Maya wants to be first, I'm more.
Sure, I, um, I guess there's a lot here, but I, I think that while things haven't been done a certain way, we do have an agreement to our meetings to follow proper rules and Laurel can make a motion or whatever she wants to make a motion for. The, the question of turning the committee into an advisory committee to vote in the, the, the word constraints, I, I see the things that I understand as needing to be followed as not necessarily constraints, but as, um, opportunities for accountability and accessibility and transparency. It's things like noticing meetings, making them public, taking minutes. We just heard, we don't know when it happened or who said it because minutes aren't taken. So you can talk to this after I'm done, but I, I, I see them as, um, there's a reason, you know, we talk about how important processes and procedures and policies and practices, but there's a reason that those mechanisms are put in place for those, um, for those types of spaces. And, and I, I can only, I can only think that making things more accessible and more transparent would, would lead to, to positive things. I, I, so I, and I want to just kind of, if I understand, is that Laurel can make whatever motion she wants to make, it's on the topic.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you, I, I second the motion, which as I understand it is to make this a joint board superintendent committee and to add parent representatives. And I, I just want to say for those, for the majority of the board who was not around when this originally happened, not that long ago and in the 2019, 20 school year, I think all of the board went to several meetings. Called by the PTO at Kelly and YG that were joint parent teacher meetings that were packed, like hard to find a place to sit, packed with unanimous, or I don't know, maybe 98% opposition to the plan. We had nights of school, school board meetings when 40 people from the Kelly and YG communities showed up wearing the same shirts from their schools protesting this. So I don't think it's a, we don't have to guess as to whether or not parents want input on this. And from what I've seen, mostly parents and staff have been pretty much aligned in their concerns. And so I don't, I think it's the, I mean, to me, I think it's more transparency and more involvement and not less. There's nothing to, there, there's something to gain and nothing to lose by including parents and there's something to gain and nothing to lose by making clear in the process of what, what this committee is, which I think is what it's designed to be, which is to advise both us and the superintendent. So I second the motion.
So will you report, repeat the motion for us, Laurel? So who knows?
Repeat the, the motion.
The original motion you made was?
To add, to make it a joint committee with the all oversight that happens from having, for it to be a board committee. Um, and to add this to the items for action tonight. This one part of the huge issue that is happening.
Okay, and then Gordon, you seconded that motion? Okay. Alicia.
Quick question, because I didn't try to remember, it's late, what the rules are around a board committee. Do we then have to vote? Because like with the equity committee, you gave your card, us to vote, who went on that committee? People had to reply and we had to vote, so. No, not what is reported to the superintendent, who wouldn't say board committee, it's not a board committee, so. So that's what I'm saying is, I remember that there were some other require on it, so Alicia wants to be. I think.
Because I didn't vote for anybody to be on equity.
No, that's what I'm saying is I remember when we, we had that committee that reported to the board.
Please.
Gordon, how?
The previous one.
The previous one, and we voted members on, just like the budget committee, we have to vote members on. So I don't know if that's, again, because I wasn't prepared for this discussion tonight. I don't know where the other hidden obstacles might be and, and I know Christine is in here. So I was just asking, maybe you know if that is true or not.
So Zep, are you asking that question?
I am asking that question, I wasn't making a statement, I'm asking a question.
I call the question of the vote.
Well, can Alicia have a question answered?
If the vote is called.
Here.
If the vote is called, do we have to vote on it? Because controlling process controls systems.
She really wants to know the answer.
But that will have to be answered in, in the process of setting this committee up, absolutely. I, I know she wants to know and it will absolutely be answered in the process of setting this up because we have rules to follow around that.
So do we have to vote on calling the question? How many people would like to call the question of the vote right now, raise your hand?
I'm just.
Can I ask a question on this? So I'm just confused, so the motion is for the adding to the items or on the committee? Because there was like two being Laurel's. Yes, I was asking her to put it not to item for action, but I did get a text that we can vote on it now rather than kicking it down. So the vote, the vote is that one, that action item, thank you for clarifying that. And we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, it was called, so we have, that was, the question was called, so I think we need to vote to see if we're gonna vote on it now or finish the discussion. So all those in favor of wanting to vote on the motion right now, is cutting off discussion, raise your hand. So we have one, two, three, four, four votes, yes. So we have, I'm sorry, we had Maya, Laurel. Sorry, Maya, Laurel, Michelle, and I have Laurel, Michelle, and Gordon voting yes, Kirky? Yes, okay, so we're gonna vote on the motion right now. Okay. All those in favor of making this, making the North a joint committee and Maya joining the committee?
We don't have to put that on, you already did that.
Okay, well, let's call the vote then.
But, and adding parents was the other point.
That was not part of the motion, Gordon, are you amending the motion? Gordon, I, I asked Laurel to repeat the motion and she didn't, it was to make this a joint committee and put Maya on it.
Uh, that is not what I said.
I think it was, but I was listening.
You were saying what you want on it.
No, no, I was listening carefully for what the motion was, do you want to amend the motion?
I didn't say that, let the show. What I said was I'd like to make this an item for action because you said I had to and you didn't tell me I didn't have to yet. You said that sense, and I would like to make this a joint superintendent and board committee. We also will be able to decide who goes on this committee when that topic comes up. We're just deciding to make it, this to happen. That's why I say, because it's a simple discussion to vote on this and make it happen and also as a board can decide what that committee looks like.
So we don't want to understand what the vote is about. Okay. Then all in favor of the motion as it stands, raise your hand. Okay, we have five votes for Kirky, Maya, Laurel, Michelle, and Gordon. So if the motion passes, all those opposed, raise your hands, say sign. We have two, no votes, Judy and Alicia. Okay. So, um, moving on to, I think we're done with this item. Any other more questions for our item for information about the North? Okay, so we did have a few items for action. We have a few policies and I believe Carrie Delph is coming up for those. And you know, we've removed one from the list and that's right, GBB.
General Counsel Christine Estes is not here today, so I am here in her stead. The board heard and considered at the last board meeting about four policies, three revisions and one new policy. The board has removed that new potential policy in consideration tonight. So what you are looking at here is some revisions to existing policy of GBA, equal employment, employment opportunity, policy IGBB, intelligent program, and policy JFCJ weapons in schools, there is a roughly minor changes to bring our policies in line, and all with changes in state law and having authority for clarity.
So does anyone have any questions for Carrie about those three policies and we'll vote on them individually? Laurel.
The equal employment policy seems to be missing a, a lot, from what I understand of what equal employment means. Am I, am I, I'm not understanding something? It, because the thing, I'm talking to the part where it talks about, um, who gets appointed and then only talks about ADA and Title IX. Does that cover everything in the previous paragraph? As far as I understand, it does not.
The first paragraph addresses equal employment opportunity and treatment that shall be practiced by the district. The second paragraph specifically designates the superintendent will appoint an employee to serve as a compliance. The combined coordinator for ADA, which is required, the ADA concession by before, and a Title IX coordinator. That's not meant to be all encompassing, everything is addressed in the first paragraph, that's correct.
So I would like to amend the policy to say that we will have somebody in charge of, and you know, we have race, color, religion, sex, orientation, who is in charge of that right now? Because it's not in the policy and I would like it stated in the policy of that position and that somebody has all the things that aren't covered and the other two positions that are named will be that we name them in this policy and that that person needs to exist in our district.
So just to repeat that, Gordon, would you like to amend this, this draft policy? The board is considering to add that the superintendent will appoint an employee to, to be in charge of equal employment opportunity and treatment in addition to the specific compliance coordinator for ADA and Title IV and the Title IX coordinator, and that would be in addition to the second paragraph saying that superintendent will appoint employee to
Yes.
be in charge of equal employment opportunity?
Yes.
So we voted to.
If that's an amendment, we should be moving it and then amending it. Okay. So you want to talk about?
I, I can I say that's a question first? Well, it's about the policy, this policy, it's about the policy and not the procedure. If we're going to amend the policy, shouldn't we table the vote so then Christine can amend it before we vote on it? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna manufacture the language to cover the legalities of the questions one whole raises.
So what's been suggested is that there just be added a mention that the superintendent should designate a person who is identified as being, as being in charge of equal employment opportunity and the board could either make that amendment tonight and approve the policy or note that that's an intention, that you want that language brought back in the policy for approval at the next meeting, table this policy until a date certain of June 1st and consider the other two policies for approval and move the board and then come back from general counsel with that language. And that may be preferred, they can have that general counsel, uh, opinion on that language. So we have two options.
Well, I would like to table it, to let Christine have a chance to address the issues that we're raised and come back to it on June 1st.
Do I have a second? Kirky, so Maya moves and Kirky seconds, any more discussion about tabling it up?
Yes, um.
Laurel.
My, my specific ask was that I realize some of these things are, some of these titles, these job titles are, do cover it, so I want it to be specific to what is not covered in those job titles. Like, I do not want duplicate, so I don't need duplicate work and I do not want the broad title of equal employment person, because we don't, again, don't need duplicate work. So if somebody has that position right now, great, if not, I would like to know if we identify it and to know what it's called and, and that it not be such a broad description that it actually can't be overseen very well, so, thanks.
So that's what we're getting.
That's what we're getting dedicated to, general counsel, okay? The next policy.
So there's been a motion to table this policy until a certain of June 1st, I believe? And that's you seconded and not voted on?
Okay, yes, let's vote on that, and any more discussion?
I'd like the person's actual name and.
He's like, okay, okay. No more discussion, let's call through the vote of tabling this policy till June 1st, we're gonna add additional amendment. All those in favor of tabling it up to June 1st, raise your hand. Looks like you passed that one passes unanimously, hey. So the next, the next one, the next policy is IGBB. Maya.
I'd like to move to accept the revisions to policy IGBB.
You have a second? Okay, Maya moved and Kirky seconded, any discussion on that policy? Okay, let's, then, I don't see anyone with their hands up, all those in favor of passing IGBB as written? Your packet, raise your hand. Uh, that passes unanimously with seven votes. Okay, the last policy in here is the, uh, JFCJ. Maya.
I move to accept the revisions to policy JFCJ.
Wait, did we, did we put aside the wrong one?
No, the, the one on the concealed weapons is the KGB.
JFCJ is just the, the law requirements for changes in the student weapon policy. It's not, it has nothing to do with the, the.
So it's just, it only applies to students?
Right, it applies to students and it's the, the, the changes that the law has been asking for.
I, I thought the same thing at first, I'll keep first, yeah.
Alright.
So we have, we have, it's moved and seconded, Kirky, so Maya moved it and.
I can second it.
Okay, Kirky seconded, so any discussion? The JFCJ weapons in schools policy, as it is in the patent, raise your hand. That one passes unanimously with seven votes, okay. Now we are finally at our item for action at a future meeting to. Now we are finally at our item for action at a future meeting to consider the adoption of elementary language arts curriculum. Thank you, thank you for waiting. I think we have two of us. Okay, well, just turn it over to Eric Anderson to lead this discussion.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Vanderkort. I'm Eric Anderson, Director of Curriculum. I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you the results of the elementary language arts adoption and the recommendation for materials purchased. This process proved to be an incredible learning opportunity for all those involved. I would like to thank our amazing teachers on the adoption team. They demonstrated flexibility and fortitude during an extraordinary year. I'd like to introduce Sherri Aaron at the end of the table she spoke earlier, one of those amazing teacher leaders who is here this evening to help answer questions. And also I'd like to take a moment to thank my colleagues on my way, Katie Styles, Eileen, Leah, Sarah. So these master teachers led the process with integrity, vulnerability, and passion. I couldn't be more honored to be on the team, to learn, and be alongside them. I'd like to note that we did change a couple slides in your packet. Slide two went from words to a graph and we added two slides to help explain the English and Spanish programs. We'll make sure that those updated slides are in your Friday memo. I'll now pass off the presentation to Katie Styles.
Thank you, and we also have our colleague Lynette Williams at home on Zoom. We appreciate your time this evening to share with you the enormous amount of time and work that our team and nearly 50 classroom teachers along with specialists have done over the past nine months in an effort to adopt new language arts materials. It is hard to sum up a year's work before being 10 minutes, so I promise it'll talk fast. We will have time for questions at the end. Before we start, I want to thank the teachers on the pilot team, some you've heard here tonight, and those supporting the work. Many poured their time, effort, expertise, and heart into this work and process. This wouldn't have been possible without everyone's dedication and commitment to finding high-quality instructional materials to best serve the needs of our 4J students. The why behind our adoption is shown here on this slide. On the left is third grade reading data showing a downward trend in 4J students on the top of the line. I can help explain it as you go. If you look at the graph on the left with the lines.
Is it too small on the screen? Can you turn around and look at the big screen?
Okay. On the right, you can see that it is predictable which students succeed and which do not. We know this data is not acceptable to you as our school board, to our teachers, and our community members, but most importantly, our students. During SIA planning, community engagement of all stakeholders showed K3 literacy as one of the top priorities. Clearly, this is a top priority for all stakeholders when we allow our students to reverse this trend. These two graphs have been used throughout our adoption team meetings. The data helps ground us to remember who we are purchasing these materials for. Of course, teachers need accessible and usable materials, which was a criteria in our selection process. But the most, but most importantly, our drive was to improve achievement for all students and significantly decrease the inequitable achievement gap. 4J has incredibly skilled and hardworking teachers. They consistently go a mile from beyond to be right by our students. They have made do with the same reading curriculum for the last 15 years. Many teachers spend hours of time and sometimes their own money trying to adapt our current curriculum to include most current research-proven practices. Our reading data shows that despite our dedicated teachers' vast efforts, students, especially our most underserved, aren't making the growth needed to be proficient readers. Instead of asking our teachers to enhance some of our curriculum, we want to equip them with high-quality instructional materials so they can focus their time and energy on what they do best, guiding each student to reach their full potential. You have all received updates in your board packets throughout the year, sharing our progress. This timeline shows some of the highlights from each of the phases of the adoption process. I'll give you a moment to review them now. Under the evaluate and report column in May, it shows that in the past week, we presented to the instructional advisory council, who reviewed our process at length and gave very positive feedback. Felicia spoke to this in her board mentioning at the beginning. We also presented to the instructional leadership team, who gave more helpful feedback, who then made a recommendation to Superintendent Vanderkort. Her recommendation to you is what brings us here tonight. We are currently here in our process. Once we have your approval, we will begin to order materials and the exciting work of implementation begins with language arts instructional leaders. Equity has been at the forefront of our decisions throughout this process. As Dorota Hampton says, people talk about equities if it had just one dimension and either/or way, it's this or it's that. In reality, equity is multifaceted and complex issue. Equity is not found only in the diverse nature and careful selection of our materials, but also in the commitment of our teachers to use culturally inclusive instructional practices. We also worked to create a team with staff of color, used the 4J Equity Tool, and then Lens, multiple times throughout our process. We received input and feedback from staff and pilot families. Held two different community events, both in English and Spanish, live and asynchronously, and used an additional tool called the NYU Culturally Responsive Curriculum Score Card to evaluate our materials. To further support this, as shown on this slide, the National Equity Project's recommendations for promoting educational equity highlights the following standards. Eliminate inequitable practices and cultivate the unique gifts, talents, and interests of every child, so that success and failure are no longer predictable by student identity, racial, cultural, economic, or any other social factor. We used the Equity Tool throughout the process, beginning them to fall to informed decisions. A recent example of using the 4J Equity Lens was during our last adoption team meeting with over 40 teachers. We went through a protocol to examine how the use of the chosen curriculum would potentially impact underserved or marginalized individuals or groups, and how we might eliminate potential barriers. Here are some of the comments from classroom teachers as we use the 4J Equity Lens regarding adopting these curriculum materials. I'll give you a moment to read. For those of you listening and not able to see the presentation, I will highlight two for you. In the top left yellow shape is from the Spanish dual-language immersion teacher who is quoted as saying, "In dual-language immersion, students can express themselves and have a voice, especially of our underserved students. Their views are valued." And in the bottom right side in the orange square, sort of, "Kids forgot that they were in reading class, and even the kids who previously didn't think of themselves as readers were engaged in discussions and activities since the symbolic science class and traditional reading." As you heard earlier and as you can see here, pilot teachers have a lot of optimism about the impacts the new materials will have for our students. Two weeks ago, we finished up the pilot portions of our process. Teachers met in grade level groups and grades K through 5 groups, all grades, to discuss the strengths and areas of growth for each of the programs. They got to share their opinions and experiences and hear those of their peers. In the final rating completed by pilot teachers only, we asked process questions. We knew it was essential to keep teacher input at the forefront of our decision-making and we wanted to make sure teachers felt their voices were heard during the process. Our team helped navigate the path, but it was the pilot teachers who chose where to go. We are very proud to show on the left that 90% of our teachers agreed or strongly agreed that their input informed the decisions and outcomes of the adoption. On the right, 93% of the teachers on the team agreed or strongly agreed that they had sufficient opportunity to share their input. No one chose strongly disagreed for either statement. Along the lines of teacher voice, at our final meeting with our whole adoption team, teachers reviewed and reflected on the data from the scores they gave each of the programs for each of the criteria. We then used the 4J Equity Lens to ask ourselves the questions highlighted in the tool. Teachers completed one last rating deciding which program would best meet the unique needs of our 4J students. The next slide reveal the outcomes. Results show that 84% of our pilot teachers chose the WIT and Wisdom suite of materials. Zero chose our other pilot program EL, and the remaining teachers preferred to keep journeys of our current curriculum. WIT and Wisdom, as was spoken about on the previous slide, comes as a suite of materials because it is three different components that go together to create one comprehensive program. On the left, you see a picture of Foundations. Yes, you heard that quickly, Foundations. This is a foundational skills program that is used with rates kindergarten through third grade. This provides the building blocks students use to write the code of being able to sound out and spell words to become fluent readers. Underneath that, you see GOs. These are decodable texts that link what students are learning in foundational skills to the content and what they are learning in WIT and Wisdom. On the right, you see examples of books from WIT and Wisdom. This is the knowledge, comprehension, and writing portion of the curriculum. Combined, these three help structure a strong tier-one whole-class learning experience for students where all components of literacy are interwoven together. This includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The Spanish language arts teachers had three options: continue with Maravillas or Journeys, select Benchmark, or American Reading Company. As you can see, 100% of the teachers selected American Reading Company. They expressed enthusiasm that the art curriculum will now align topics and specific language transference across English and Spanish. American Reading Company is an allied Spanish-English program built on the use of trade books, trade books, excuse me, versus portions of text. The texts are arranged thematically, over four units, two informational research rooms, and two genre and author studies which feature own-voices books. Students read and write each day and finish the unit with a culminating writing project based on the unit's theme and the student's choice of trade books. As one pilot teacher shared with ARC, I saw increased student engagement and participation, higher-level thinking, students using academic language, increase in writing engagement. I'm excited to see students continuing to be excited about learning. Combined, these programs cost $4.8 million for all K5 students for the duration of this adoption, which is seven years. This includes materials, teacher, and principal professional development, digital access, and publisher partnership. Here, you can see the many components of a solid implementation plan. I once heard curriculum compared to the tools of a painter: the brushes, the paint, the canvas. But it is the teacher and students who make the masterpiece come to life. A well-thought-out implementation plan provides educators with professional development, time to collaborate with peers and specialists, opportunities to plan in teams and as individuals, and to make adjustments and enhancements as teams professionally appropriate. It is when teachers are equipped with high-quality tools that they are able to focus their attention on the diverse needs of their students in order to make learning come to life for all of their students. Thank you for your time tonight and to our team for making this work possible. I hope you welcome your questions.
Thank you for the presentation. It was really thorough, I appreciate it. Do we have questions? So the board, who's the board? Laurel?
I'm wanting to understand, I was hoping to be able to see some of this at some point, but I had asked and wasn't, I guess wasn't. But I, I wanted to understand how teach, you know, teachers teach in different ways and how, are they restricted to a certain amount of time? Can they adopt this in their own way to their curriculum? Not their curriculum, you will understand I won't say everything correctly. Right? But can they add this in their own way and what they do already, so or not? Or? And not say do so many minutes of all these certain things? I, I'm not going to say this perfectly and maybe other board members can say it better, but I'd like to understand more if you speak to that.
That's, that's Laurel's. I think she's asking is like how prescriptive it is and how much freedom the teachers have to be able to teach in their teaching style and their critical self. Is that what you had to ask? Alright.
Thank you for the question. I'll take the first question and then pass off the second question. We did reach out to Superintendent Vanderkort and offered the opportunity to meet with board members prior to the decision on June 1st. We understood that there's a very short timeline from the request to tonight, so we do have ample time to meet with folks who we do want to meet with board members, so that will be that opportunity. And I apologize if you have not been notified yet, but we'll make that time happen.
I'll speak to the other career question about mentors and teachers having flexibility to do their craft. And this program, WIT and Wisdom, really lends itself beautifully to that. So it provides this structure and teachers can take it in many dozen directions. We have Quinn up here doing public comment earlier tonight, and he had his kids, they were setting the heart. They traced a gigantic heart out on the playground. He had kids carrying blue paper that was oxygen and handing off the oxygen. I mean, just amazing. Also, we had a class where an earth surgeon came to speak. Teachers were able to take this in many different directions and that's part of the beauty of it. Yeah, so length of the program, it's four modules. Those modules are for the, four modules for the whole year. Each module is about, about eight weeks, so it's not like you have to be done in eight weeks, but it takes about eight weeks to get through it. There's lots of trade books that kids are immersed in. There's just many, many opportunities for teachers to apply their craft and not have to spend all the time looking for things. Like the structure is there for them. They don't have to spend time, they don't have to spend their personal money. It's very comprehensive. Did anyone want to?
Did I answer your question? No, you don't, Gordon. Okay, thanks, Gordon.
Maybe this will help clarify because I think I'm going to ask something very similar. First of all, I just want to say how much I appreciate the work that, that's been done on this, both by you, Eric, by the Tosas and all the teachers who worked to demo this. I know this has been a very thorough and a very inclusive process. I really appreciate that. The, my questions are probably unsurprising given the, given the conversations we've had at other times, which is kind of like Laurel's. Like one of the, one of the things I saw on one of the slides about equity was the important. was the importance of recognizing the unique gifts, talents, and interests of each student. So, you know, kids are unique. A lot of kids learn in different ways. It's great to hear from the teachers who testified earlier about how much their students engaged with and got from these materials. But obviously, different kids respond to different sets of materials. So here's a, here's a set of religious, religious related questions. What, I know the committee was given a choice of choosing approving one or two curriculum, and what made you approve just one? But, and then kind of more like what Laurel was asking, what is the balance between how much you can substitute or supplement your own materials as a teacher versus is there a requirement to quote, "teach with fidelity"? And what does that mean? I know that I've, I've sometimes been confused, just, and I think it's just because I'm new to it about what people mean when they say we, we picked a curriculum. So like, how many, I know sometimes within a curriculum doesn't necessarily mean you're all using this textbook, but like, here's twenty different books that you could choose to use in teaching certain standards, and people can choose different ones of them. So how many, how much choice like that is there? If a teacher thinks they can teach the standards better using other materials, are they free to do that? As Laurel asked, I wasn't, maybe it's because I'm listening online. I know in the past, there have been some curriculum materials where there were specified minimum number of minutes required to be spent on that. And I don't know if that's the case here. And last thing is, do you think there's a way to measure how much this succeeds in creating a pleasure in reading? Like, how much kids, how many books kids choose to read that are not assigned or choose to read voluntarily outside of school? I mean, you've all spent a year or more figuring out the best way to teach this. And I just wonder if you think there's something that we could do that's not particular to this curriculum, but that could measure that in addition to the kind of, you know, decoding skills and stuff that we're measuring?
That's a lot of questions. So if you don't remember them, you write it down, it looks like.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I can answer a couple of those. When you asked why we chose to recommend one program and not two? When we surveyed our teachers to ask which program they preferred, we didn't have any votes for the other program that we piloted. And everyone voted, few people chose to keep Journeys, and everyone else voted for this particular program. So I think if we were at fifty-fifty split, we would be in a different discussion of which, what do we do now? But that wasn't the case with how the data landed. As far as instructional minutes, it makes sense, but it's, the schools have certain minutes that they allocate for certain core subjects. And curriculum or programs is designated for minutes because you have to have that structure within your day. You can't have somebody teaching three hours of reading and somebody not teaching thirty minutes. So within the structure of the day and how supports come in for different tier-two and tier-three instruction, that all is built within the schedule. And this program does come with guidelines for that. So many minutes of teaching foundational skills to your class as a structure within a lesson that's a guideline for people to follow. Coming into the program, especially with the WIT and Wisdom portion, Melanette can speak to the ARC program for this. We know that what says it's going to take an hour is probably going to take much more than that, especially as we're beginning, and Sheri can kind of speak to that too. But there needs to be flexibility for teachers to be able to pull extra things in, spend extra time, take two days to take a lesson, because we know that it's going to take more than that in the flexibility within our teaching to be able to do what's best for our students and not think, oh, if I, you know, today I have to get through lesson two because tomorrow I'm expected to be somewhere else. So they'll have a professional autonomy to be able to know how long a lesson takes to get through it. As far as books and choosing from a big variety, there are a set of books that come with the curriculum that the lessons are built for. So if it was a choose your own adventure with fifty different books to choose with how to address the standards would require a lot of work on the teacher's point, teacher's part to be able to create all of those lessons, the embedded assessments, the projects, the writing tasks. And to be able to do that for so many different texts would be quite challenging and would require a lot of work for our teachers. What this program, and again, Melanette speaks to her program, what it does is have cortex that classes focus on, and then they come with lots of additional books supporting the themes and topics of the modules so that students have an opportunity to choose other books that get deeper, teachers can expand, they can plan extra resources to support the topics that they're learning about. And I don't know what other questions I missed.
We're going American Reading Company. It's very similar to into WIT and Wisdom in that regard. There, there's a cortex around a theme, and then there's lots and lots and lots of trade books for students to be able to pick and choose from. And in my experiences in the pilot teachers' classrooms is that you would have kids with, you know, twenty or thirty books that they were going through and looking and reading and trading with each other after they read one. And they would settle on some that they were, wanted to use for their final project. Every day, they did some writing around the books that they were reading. So I think the pilot teachers that spoke this evening, and then we could give you some information around some of the survey data, which showed that when, they were very excited about their students' enthusiasm for the materials in a way that they hadn't seen in journeys. Like any new curric, any new curriculum, any new, any new unit that you create, if you're at the university and you're creating a set of new courses, it's a lot of work the first time. It gets a little better the second time. You might swap out some texts, et cetera. But it's always a lot of work the first time you're creating a new course. And so I think that's the same here, but with proper implementation and support from teacher leaders as well as the teachers on special assignment and the instructional staff, we, we hope to provide them with a really positive start to the school year.
I guess I'm, just one follow-up thing. I'm still not entirely clear, like the, I'm sorry, I certainly don't think, oh, we want to put teachers in a position of having to invent, you know, a whole thing. And I understand that you have to teach reading for this much and, you know, ELA for this much and social studies for that much. But within that, like if there's a teacher who says, okay, these, I have, I have a group of kids this year, and all they want to read is graphic novels about space. And I think I can teach them not the whole year. There's these standards here. I think I can teach them through graphic novels about space. Are they free to do that for some unit as, or do they need to use? Like in partly, you know, I know the Journeys curriculum, which now not many people like, at one point was presented to the board in a similar way. This is the cutting-edge thing that all the research shows. And I'm not, I don't, I don't mean that in any way to sound like snarky or to, or to make a parallel between this, the kind of work that went into this and that. But I know a lot of teachers who Journeys mostly sat on their shelves. They used it for some things, but they came up with other things and swapped things that they thought would be more engaging for the kids who they had. So if there's a teacher who's in that situation, are they free to do that? Or do they need to show first that they spent some set of minutes on a specific set of curriculum materials?
I'm wanting to address a little bit of that, Gordon. I love that you mentioned space because actually in our WIT and Wisdom curriculum, the third grade, one of the fourth grade modules is all about space. And so one of the great things about both of these, ARC and WIT and the curriculum is that, as you mentioned, there are four modules per year which allow a really deep dive into the topic of the module. So within those module topics, they're really interdisciplinary, and so the topic is space. But around that, that general theme of space, there's, we're shlemented actual science on my space. Or in the other, the fourth grade module that was mentioned before about the heart, there's, there was the deep dive into actual science of the heart, as well as the curriculum uses a lot of deeper dives into art, into great artworks. So, and brings in social studies topics, which is really exciting. So since there are so many interdisciplinary pieces within that topic, teachers and students can dive deeper into their particular passions, whether that's science or whether that's for art, and wrap that in within the, within the theme of the module. So that does allow for some flexibility too, and for teachers to teach to their passions while still maintaining the, the general strand of what they're teaching through the curriculum.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the other part that you mentioned about kids developing a love of reading and reading books outside. But we know that for some kids, the foundational skills or lack of foundational skills can be a gatekeeper to being able to do that. And so having foundations, which we're proposing, well, foundations which we're proposing to adopt is, it's a real gift for all students who might struggle with that so that they can learn those skills, they can learn them solidly, and then they can get into those books. And so for kids who might have in the past picked up a big chapter book from their shelf and looked at it visibly, and you could pretend that they can really dive into it, but when they actually try to, they're, they're held back by the foundational skills that they're missing. So now with a really solid foundational skills program, that, that gate won't be closed to so many kids, and the kids can all get into those novels so that they can be reading them and can find the things that they are passionate about to read in their own spare time. Also, the deep dive into the content knowledge, that's within these modules, allows kids to do that too. Because as they learn more about a computer topic against space or human heart or masterpieces of art, they can, that sparks an interest for them, and then they want to go on and read deeper about that on their own time at home, and they have the skills to do it. You know, the gathering.
Thank you.
Oh, I have some questions.
Unless you have more.
I didn't know if Sheri wanted to talk about the foundational skills piece because she used that so much in her classroom.
I can. So I just, foundational skills in my classroom, I just didn't work foundation. I'll just talk a little bit about what we do in foundations each day. My students are reading the names of the letters and their sounds. The coolest things that we have that came with the curriculum is this magnetic word has a separate magnetic letter, the regular alphabet. My students are associating their letters and sounds and their spelling words, which I love. We don't, we don't do spelling tests, but I will dictate a word. Maybe they want to stop, and we tap it out. Let them learn to stop. Now they're going to spell that word or go ahead. And they are, they're just tapping away, they're finding their letters, and they're spelling my words. And I would expect that from, I always do, but what I love is that I'm seeing students do it. And that, that kind of hurts, and it's awesome, all at the same time. But I'm watching so many students be successful. Every student is successful. There is no student in my classroom right now who cannot spell at least their C, D, C consonant, consonant words that I dictate to them. And most of them are still in blends now as well. So it's, it's very exciting. It's really fun to watch them be excited and be doing this. Can I say a little more?
Okay.
I'm going to add another piece. I have a kindergarten teacher who's probably saying that more for me than it would maybe for some of the older grades, but these littles come in with radically different development places. So some kids can hold a pencil, some kids are really frightened with that implement still, and it doesn't work for them quite yet. So having them write their letters or write words can be really difficult. The fact that they get to use magnets, that they can just manipulate and spell, it opens a door for them that might otherwise be really difficult to go through. Yes, we're writing, we're doing that to whiteboards and these amazing little lines that they write on, like the sky line and the plane line and worm line that's way down there, and the grass line that you get to for a one line. And so we're learning our letter placement, we're learning correct formation more successfully than I first think before. And I think I should, I should be taking longer than twenty-three years, twenty-three years in 4G, and mostly with little people. So I, I'm just so excited to see how much progress they're making, how quickly they're learning, and how successful they feel, how they're putting it into practice right away in their writing. My kids, I introduced news stories this week, actions to news, birthday news. And they just went to town writing about these news stories from their lives that were so important to them. You know, we're just learning.
Thank you. Maya, in the future.
I, there's so many things I'm really excited about. The tactile components do it really make me very excited. I have three kids, and all three of them went into kindergarten with very, like you said, the fine motor skills, and not only the fine motor skills, but also the eye tracking that is linked to reading, all that stuff. I don't have to repeat myself, right?
Yeah.
I love the fifty-plus or nearly fifty classroom teachers who are involved in this, and, and I can pay attention as much as I can to how people are feeling super connected. And I really appreciate that, that you went this route, considering the last time wasn't so inclusive. That's very important to me, and having you all up there. I mean, you're great there, but the rest of you, I, I feel really, really.
I get it all the time.
It, it makes, it makes it so much more compelling to have teachers have their hands in this. It's such an intimate and ongoing level, not just like this random check-in. So I really appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. The, maybe I'll do it not like Gordon. I'll go my style, which is I'll ask you one at a time, because if not, I'll forget what I asked. The, the two graphs that were, like people voted the Journeys and then the, the graph about did they feel like they were a little informed, giving good feedback? I'm curious, I'm curious, why, did you, did you also include a question of like, why did you want to keep Journeys? Because it's not going to change my position on this, but just out of curiosity, I'm wondering about the people who were not part of the majority. And I'm also curious if you got feedback as to why people, like, you know, even a small amount or felt like they weren't as included as they would have liked? Partly just so that when we do this again in seven years or whatever it is, that we run from this and carry it forward? So that's my first question is about the, the folks who weren't part of the big pie, part of the big part. And you can just say we didn't ask to, if that's the case.
We, we didn't ask the Journeys folks what they thought. And as far as the people who weren't heard, it was two on one of the graphs and three on one of, they're a five-point scale. They scored two or three. We only, in the statistics, we counted the people that scored four or five. So in both of the graphs, so did you feel you had enough input? Or do you feel like input impacted the decisions? On one, there were, it was just a couple of people who chose it not to discount their experience. It's anonymous, so we can't go back and find out. We don't know who they are. So that, it, that would be a great question to ask. If you weren't to, why did you? We didn't, and because we don't know who they are, we can't say that out at this point. But that would be a great question.
It would, I, I would appreciate that in the future, just to be able to learn for the next time. Because this is so different than the last time, so it's kind of like you're inventing a new process. My other question, this might just be beating the horse or whatever the expression is. But it goes back to Laurel and Gordon's question. I'm going to be much more explicit about it, I think. I, I'm, I'm super excited that this is something that is going to make life a lot easier for teachers who are new and teachers who are struggling, teachers who are overwhelmed. I'm also equally concerned about those teachers who have spent twenty years developing their own curriculum or their own pathway. And, and, and I'm wondering about the, A, the taking away of, of that, that accumulation of skillset that they have brought to the table. And I'm wondering also about the, the added burden on them to have to learn a whole new system after twenty, whatever years. For some people, that's great, but for other people, they have a metaphoricalism lesson that, that reaches the same goals but has nothing to do with the heart. And, and, and I'm worried about, I'm worried about those teachers, A, you know, I mean, we see this mass exodus of teachers, and is this going to be the kind of thing that makes teachers be like, everything is so hard, and now I can't even do my fill-in-the-blank lesson that achieves the same goal as this one? So, so I am concerned about that. And I'm concerned about that it also, with the goal of wanting things to be very streamlined so that, you know, questions we've learned about this in the fall, so that questions of mobility between schools, for example, are, are addressed proactively. I'm concerned also that that takes away from the unique experience that, that can be had. Um, I'm concerned also that that takes away from the unique experience that, that can be had. And I'm not sure that just one person being a heart surgeon and another person not is, 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 is enough for some of our teachers who really are invested in, in, um. Can have been proven successful by the metrics that we have laid out, um, in, in, in delivering their, their craft and the science behind their own delivery.
I'd like to start, um, with that question that I think you asked, I'd like to jump in. Uh, twenty plus years of experience and, um, you know, sharing up here as an example, can't be replaced like that. Those are leaders in our district, um, that skill set, um, isn't replaced by curriculum. Um, we all acknowledge that, we all understand that. And those, um, teachers are going to be really important in the implementation of this, um, new curriculum over the next few years. And so when we've been working, um, in conversations we had with the adoption teams, we know we're not going to pick a perfect curriculum. Uh, it's just, it doesn't exist, there's holes within this one, and we want to be able to supplement, we want to be able to add, we want to make it more rich. Um, with more, um, cultural responsive materials and there's so many different areas in which the expertise and experience of teachers and past practice can build on. And so when we look at this curriculum, we think about where do we want to be in three years? Um, and that's where the expertise and experience of master teachers in our district really come in. And so the lessons that we will work through, um, with, within this scope and sequence, we're going to find some that work better than others. And teachers are going to have ideas on how to elevate, um, and so that skill set isn't lost, um, it's, it's desperately needed. So we have two hundred new teachers a year, uh, that are coming into our district. And so they need mentors, they need fabulous teachers who know how to work within a curriculum to bring it alive for kids. And so, um, I think a couple of things, one, um, what we're asking for is a commitment to, um, to giving this new curriculum a shot. Um, and to evaluate it and have a feedback loop. Um, and, and, and part of the reason why we're asking for that is our data shows that completed economy hasn't worked. Some teachers may be able to do exactly what you're talking about and have great results. But we also have students in, um, in experiences where that hasn't been the case, a teacher pulls in and they may not be able to have that skill set. Or they're doing it because we didn't have great curriculum, and they're just pulling for teachers to be teachers, whatever it might be. And so with this, it's so foundational for us, um, for all of our teachers across the district to have this great, hopefully great curriculum that we're bringing in. And we believe in that we're going to continue to assess and improve upon and add on to. And so, um, when I hear Gordon's question around, I'd really like to spend time on whatever this unit may be. Um, I want, I, not I want, but I believe as a whole, our leadership team and instruction department, um, wants us to try to move away from, um, projects that are maybe super near and dear. So we've heard stories from teachers through this saying, I have a student who got this lesson that I teach in third grade, they also got it in second grade. Because we don't have articulation and vertical articulation. And so understanding what's being taught, when and where, and then seeing that science is, um, part of this module. And then what experience and knowledge can that teacher bring to that to elevate it to a whole other level? Because you can't replace twenty plus years of experience. Uh, but what that twenty years can do is take that curriculum with those ideas, those lessons, and build, um, what we have. And so what we start with in year one, I don't believe we'll end up with in year three. I think our teachers are going to add and maybe into something that's going to be fantastic and great. Um, the second piece is that through this process, we found that teachers, um, when it comes to, you know, especially the early grades, rethinking how we teach reading. And that process and the new best research and what has come alive for teachers who have had taught for twenty plus years are like, oh, my gosh, this is great. It is more work and it is going to be hard, but we found our teachers are just like, they're eating it up. Um, and there's also a compliment of the letter stringing, um, that has, that we have over a hundred plus teachers that are part of this around this idea. How to teach reading and, and to supplement in with, um, the how of the what of the curriculum. And so, um, again, Katie, you know, talked about that idea of the painter has the brush and the paints and the canvas, but they make that part come alive. And that's what we're asking for with our teachers is to use this curriculum, um, and bring it alive. Often, and we heard this from teachers on our team, that they often happen to develop curriculum. Uh, it's that thing about how to spark the, the creativity, the making student invisible in their classroom. How to bring, if a light will turn on and seeing the brilliance of their children, you know, half the curriculum walks through your door every day. We need to embrace it, um, and make sure that our kids are getting what they need. So the curriculum is, is one little piece of what makes what happens in our classroom so special. You know, what's that?
So just to put it really bluntly, then, by adopting this curriculum, it's less, I mean, it is obviously a, a collection of tools or whatever. But, um, it's also in essence going to be certain as a mandate, right? Like, to use the metaphor of the painter, like, you're going to have to paint a house, you're not going to be able to choose to have a brick house. I love metaphors, I'm sorry.
Develop a house.
Does that make sense? Like, I, right, if the house is the, is the overarching goal.
But it's our team, you have to build the bricks.
Right. Right.
So.
And that's what I just pointed out, is this ultimately going to be a mandate? I think that's a strong word, but.
I think maybe a strong word, and our board policy says that teachers will follow board approved adopted materials. And so I'm saying yes, um, but I believe that there's also flexibility within the length of the modules to bring in teacher creativity and ability to do, um, projects and extensions and scaffolds. And that's one of the key parts of this, I think, as we build it, is bringing those resources in, so teachers aren't on the island that we have. We started an elementary hub a few years ago, and it was nice for teachers to be able to pull front. But what can be really difficult for teachers is to, because it's so raw, what, what teachers teach is, is who they are, is what is their retirement being. And so sometimes sharing with the possibility of, of folks being, well, that's not very good, or that can be really scary. And that's not the environment that we want for today. What we want is to have an environment where there's co-ideality and collaboration, and people are producing, and we're like, that is awesome. We do want to build that, and we want to build this scope and sequence of amazing materials and lessons in units. Um, and I think the flexibility of having the four modules and the time and space there to go into depth allows teachers to bring in, um, and to be creative. And to bring in some of their expertise and love. So, um, is it a mandate, I think our, our policy states that was adopted, this was supposed to be followed. Um, I don't think we should turn it like that, because I think with the best intent, um, there are times, um, when students are getting everything that they need. Because possibly a teacher isn't, doesn't have all the tools in front of them. And so the big hope with this adoption is to get that amount of tools and, and curriculum and, and what they need. So they're, um, have the right stuff to work with, so it doesn't matter what subject you're in, you get high quality materials that are in the library to support. And that new teachers and, and, um, teachers that want to have a really solid curriculum have that. And those master teachers that have been doing this for a really long time are able to see that and be able to pull that. And it will probably be extending it out much quicker than newer teacher with, because of their experience.
I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we keep it short, and I just wanted to say thank you, like, it's super late at night, and I have to hear kids, and probably the youngest kids on this board. So really vested in this process, because they'll be, this is a permanent. Um, my question was actually on the, um, one of the first charts you showed on like the who's achieving and who's not, and who are the high performers? And I'm wondering to certainly send, as you're moving forward in adoption and as we approve this, and like if, if it's a seven year process. How often do those metrics are being taken into account? How often are you doing adjustments to curriculum? How often are you doing those things, like to make, like, what are the outcomes? You're right here, um, how are those being addressed? Um, I think it's great that you use the equity lens to do the process and those pieces of it, but I mean, that, that is something that is important. So what you're asking is how do we know if it works? Which is a great question, because when you get.
For, for everyone, not just for, yeah, because like it works obviously for some, some groups, and maybe it won't work, yes.
Um, with, embedded the assessments that you see in the graphs are from the state assessment that students start at third grade. So obviously it takes some time for kids who are growing up with this, with this side of teaching, with this different, um, way of doing foundational skills. It will, it might not show up next year, and we've got to give the kids time. Um, so that comes at third grade also within the program, and Sherri can maybe speak to this, and I don't know how far you got into it. But there's also formative assessment built within the program, especially with the foundational skills. So you're monitoring how, um, as you're introducing different letters, sounds and combinations of skills, how successful are the kids within your group? When you move on and when you slow down, and who do you, um, give an extra bolster to in a small group, and who's ready for more? And when is the whole group ready to move on? And, um, I don't know if, I don't want to give it to you, but, um, so embedded within the program is, um, with the foundational skills especially, is already that part.
Okay.
Great, I was expecting you to have, like, data, obviously, I understand. Just thinking if there are plans to be able to use those metrics and making adjustments as we move forward.
If I could just speak, you, you, you mentioned, or you were discussing about the importance of immersion programs, and so I just wanted to highlight something about, and our, uh, Anna Diaz, who spoke earlier, also highlighted the, the, um, formative assessment tools within the American Reading Company. Materials, they have, um, both for the Ennil for Spanish and the Erla for English. And what I appreciated about the, watching the teachers use the tool was, um, students, you know, they assess the students. Some students were above grade level, some were at grade level, some were below grade level. But within all of those different levels, a student could be, um, depending on how their fluency, um, was, could be given what they called a power goal. So when the teacher brought, would bring up the students to do small group learning, they didn't bring up all of the high achievers. Or, or the ones that were just at grade level, or at, at grade level, or the ones that weren't at grade level. They brought up kids who were the same power goal and worked with them around the, that same power goal. So it was really, um, it was very subtle for the students, and then they, the idea is that they work, um, on adjusting those power goals every couple of weeks to keep moving, having kids, um, continue to, uh, increase their reading abilities as. And that's all within the, the students get to pick the text that they're reading, that they want to read. So that's what's, gives them choice, but it also doesn't, um, highlight any student that's either, um, above grading level or, or grade level, or one that's below grade level.
Thanks for the example, you can say.
So I think, first of all, I'm going to do my best to articulate this, like, uh.
Oh, Laura, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Um, so I, I've been looking at, at up a little bit online, I just have a few questions of, of my own. And from the stuff I've, I've seen where people are asking questions that Luke addressed. Um, I haven't seen a whole lot about, um, our Sped students and how they will be. I have been greeted that we're in our Sped program. I can tell you, um, my son, hey, I can't remember the name of it, but he hears, is it easy, is it? He, he reacts to it like, not actually, because our kids that act, like, he's like, I'm not doing that, because that's all he got, really. Over and over, and it drove me insane. Um, so is this accessible to all of our programs, or will this be part of that curriculum? Will they be? I mean, I like the fact that we want to update and do things new, in a newer way, but I, I find what tends to happen, and it only happens in certain areas of our, our district. And it's not accessible to all of our students. So, um, I'll just do one at a time, so.
Sure, um, it's very accessible, we're, we're looking at a strong tier one program or program. That is hopefully going to prevent kids from being identified, that's needing special education with a strong foundational skills piece. Um, most often kids have trouble decoding, and that is what gets them identified with a reading disability. Um, but we will, there's so much access for this. Um, there's art, kids wonder and, um, they look at a piece of art and they wonder about it and they talk about it. And it's, there's no right or wrong answer, everybody can participate. Um, when you get to more writing tasks, there's scaffolds built in. But the idea is that we're building a learning community, where everybody's voices are heard and everybody has information to share and learn from. When we look at these knowledge filled programs, which when we're doing some research, it's a knowledge filled program. You know that kids who have high knowledge in an area, but low reading ability can comprehend more than a student who has a high reading ability. But lower knowledge in, in the area. So, um, what we're trying to do is level the playing field here.
And how do, how do we use technology to support this? Is that, is that invented in it? So like kids that need, um, like my, none of my sons write well. Um, I wish you did, no, I have a lot of stuff, so, because none of my sons is foreign. Um, but, and so just recently, are they adding some of these technologies where they can do the speech to text and things like that? Will that be in here where kids that, because really we want them to have the knowledge, right? And, but I find, and I know some of this is state level rules, but I find there's, but it's such an idea that there's only one path to this, to prove you have this knowledge. And so that is a whole bunch of kids who are outside of the curve to the side. Um, will I do more? Is this part of this curriculum or is it?
We're going to be working with, uh, um, special services department, technology folks, we've met with them before. We didn't have, um, we don't know what the curriculum is yet that we're adopting. We hope it's going to be available soon so that we could get all that, that in place. Um, there, there's not a, because we have trade books.
You would have to scan it.
Exactly. It's, I mean, there's trade books, so there, we would have to get those, you know, um, digitized for kids and things like that. Because I'll say, this is a program like no other, that we're looking at curriculum that really, it's new. And, um, I can't wait for you to come out to Daily Hill and see it and get your hands on it, get your eyes on it. And, and see what it's like, it's, it's hard to describe just what these high quality instructional materials can do.
I, I just want to say one thing, we work with our district librarian really closely. And so just like if I were in a high school English class and I was teaching a novel, I would, and I had a student that was maybe, um, dyslexic, dyslexic or needed that book in audio. We work with, I mean, that's, that's the beauty of technology now, we can get that very quickly, we can, whether it's via Kindle or whether it's via, um, Sora, et cetera. So we can work on, on bringing those, um, audio books into, um, into our library regarding, I know that we've worked with Sped in the past to have books moved, um. Made into, uh, Braille at, as well, um, for our students. And, um, that is, I could be wrong, I'd have to ask, um, um, Sped, but I do believe there's some legalities around that, meaning that it, it needs to be done. So that's something that we've done with some of our other materials in the past.
Right, but, and I don't want to, I have another question, so I don't want to labor it, I just wanted to know if it was, if it was already been embedded in the curriculum? Because that would, you know, be helpful, um, so.
Can I add one piece to that real quick? Sometimes, um, when we look at things as intervention, once a child is already struggling, but instead look at that prevention. And we do believe that these, especially with the foundational skills, when you're getting kettos when they're five. And you're using, um, the strategies and the materials as intended, what we know about kettos is that much, the, the rates that we're seeing, the literacy rates are not what's really achievable. And I think that when I hear of kettos who struggle later on, I think that they had a different experience starting from one or five, they might not be struggling later on. And so, um, that doesn't help your child, your kids now, but it helps starting.
It just told you, so it happened here.
But it helps the five year olds coming in, helps the six year olds, seven year olds coming in, so that, um, family can work in a way to improve on time. So the intervention is much more expensive than prevention and the work that goes into it. So if we can work at preventing, um, the struggling, the struggles that students have, I think that we'll have more success later on. And I think several times, okay. I think that we'll have more success later on, as I think several times, okay.
So, thank you, that's helpful, and all the messages are helpful. I read that there are a lot of errors in the student workbook materials. And so I would encourage us to tell them before we go. I think we want to fix those errors, because that was everywhere on the internet, that that teachers were frustrated that there were grammatical and text errors in the student workbook, which is unfortunate when kids are learning how to read, and it's not good enough. So I feel like we would have some kind of power if we were purchasing something to say, uh, we can fix this. Will there be enough texts for every student? I read there were, there were educators really frustrated that there weren't enough materials for all the students. And to go along with it, I'll put those together, that, and I didn't even know this existed. And so I'm just going to teach. Teach pay, teacher pay teacher for additional support materials pretty consistently? So I would like, if we can address that and what you guys know about this, and do we, will we have enough support materials? And then this makes me to the other things that are educators already bring to the table, and we talked about earlier, doing things that are own, you know, taking it and running with it.
So I was, I'm still back on your last question. I wanted to address that a little bit, and then I'll pass it down the line for your current question, if that's all right. So back to writing, and I think getting back to what Katie was saying about prevention. So one of the great things about this program is, which Sherri was talking about, with the handwriting that's embedded. So there's a really clear, step-by-step teaching process for kids to learn handwriting that again, hopefully will prevent a lot of issues like some of our kids now are experiencing. And then as the kids get older into the upper elementary grades, the the classes that I was visiting were doing essay writing or writing longer pieces. And so within that, the the assignments, the assessment pieces in the program can be written on whatever technology the child can best access. So kids can write them by hand, kids can write them on a word processing program. And are now, since kids are one-to-one with their iPads, they do have text-to-speech features on iPads. So kids can access that if they want to be able to show that they know without having to type it out or write it out on hand. So that's, so that there is freedom within this program for kids to be able to do that, to show they know how they can. And then the other piece that I wanted to address around serving our kids who see a specialist teacher, like a Sped teacher or an ELD teacher, is that this curriculum with the longer modules allows kids to develop their knowledge around one topic a lot more deeply. So for kids working on vocabulary, or kids getting ELD services, that gives them longer to develop the vocabulary around this one topic, so that they don't have the kind of heads-being effect of a more traditional traditional baseball curriculum like we used to use, that has a new story every week, a new topic every week. So kids are just getting into it and trying to learn the words about this topic, and then boom, next week, we're onto a new one. So for kids who are taking special services or of any kind of this, the the longer and deeper look into a topic can be really helpful. For your current question, I'm going to pass it back down the line. I think Katie probably did want to say.
I'll say it quick. We also, in our, when we pilot, you have the recommended books that come with the basic program. And some of our classrooms felt like it was plenty, that sharing books was actually quite appropriate. And some of them actually had more, and they've read that same thing online too. So I'm glad that you saw that. And so part of that price pack, which we recognize is not a cheap price pack, includes what they, what they call is their expanded cortex set. And after talking to our private teachers at all grade levels, kindergarten, first and second, thought that them all the books was actually very appropriate. They liked the collaborative work that students could do at farmers. And for grades three, four and five, fifth grade can already be less workload for a child. But for third and fourth, we put into the budget the expanded cortex purchase, which comes with one extra, um, tax rate to kids, which I'm very happy about. Because when you see online people, you know, if you have anyone that buy more books, there are not many more books, and we were able to put that in purchase.
Okay. And does that, do you think, is there space to say that some of the other groups are like, actually, we can correct this, right? Will there be space to add that as well for them if it's needed? Or does that mean you have to go over? How does that work if, if I'd rather have, not have frustrated teachers and have kids with books in their hands than for you guys to have to come back and go, hang on one more day?
We went off the recommendation of our pilot team, so I don't, I don't know the nuances of how that's going to be. We are best, not something to say.
We can go back with, in the Friday memo, purchase price for full sets came up versus what we put into this proposal, which was the case you have sets, full sets, you're going back.
Okay, that's great. And I couldn't find any existing studies of this program, which like usually when you, there's a, there's usually comprehensive studies of who's used it, how it works, you know, if it's reaching all demographics equally. Have you had access to that? And if you sent it to me, could you tell me where that was in all this? Because I didn't.
We haven't sent it yet, but we do have it, yes.
Okay.
And one of the, Baltimore Public Schools uses this program, which is. And that would be one place you can look. But we have different districts that with data to show their progress, and that they're doing something to document it, so we can definitely send that to you.
And that concludes the equity framework as well.
I don't know about all of the data, so we can definitely let it.
Okay. And that, you know, you took my last one. I would like, with, and I know we haven't had the the district training on this, but when equity lens is used, we'd like to see the outcome of that. You just, the written material of, you know, who is missing and and how it was addressed. And for, I find that extremely helpful. And it's, and and we've had incidences, incident.
That's not correct.
No, that's not correct. We had occurrences of people saying it's used and then not, it's the obviousness of it not being used. And I'm not accusing you of anything, because obviously you, you said we've used it several times. But I would love to see that information, just where we can all look at it and see that, you know, like what you came up with from it.
Eric, let us through protocol. And then each of us and a couple of our colleagues were about takers, I think, to the tables as the teachers discussed the different forms, and we have all of those in group chats, I'm sure.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, we get to finally summarize this something. First of all, thank you so much. I mean, I think the work is really, really, is evident. You guys are very knowledgeable about what you did, and I appreciate it. I appreciate inclusiveness, I appreciate the use of the equity tool. We'll look forward to the data that you're going to send us. And I especially, and the flexibility this this curriculum offers. And most importantly, I would, I mean, the foundational skills, I think, really are so critically important. So I'm really glad to see you're excited about that, because I would really like to see many of our kids reading at grade level sooner. It's something that we really owe our students. And so, you know, it's something we should talk about as we go along to see if the formative tests are really pulling that up. So I just want to express my appreciation and had a request that you send us to update a PowerPoint and the studies, I think the whole board would like to see those. And then whatever you have with the equity lens information, that'd be great.
And the cost of the.
The cost, I guess you're getting all those. But thank you, and I look forward to coming up and getting my hands on it too. So thanks so much.
Yeah.
And for staying as light and hanging in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We did predict to do one of the items, two of the items for action. Well, one is for information, one is for action. So we had an executive session at the beginning of the evening, five thirty. And we have, we need to take action on the, on what we talked about in there. We need to take a vote. Go for it.
I knew that the board held an open public hearing in response to a complaint received March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The hearing will be held before June fifteenth. The date, format, and ground rules of the hearing will determine by the board during the interviewing meeting of the board and will be communicated by written notice to the complainant and responded prior to the hearing.
As we have a second to the motion. Michelle, so my vote and Michelle's seconded, are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. See seven yes votes, so that says unanimously, thank you. The other thing that we didn't do was to talk about what the, what we are asked, we were asked to, in order to move forward with the superintendent decision and making and deciding on a person, we need to designate a one person from the board to work with the candidate that we have as our top priority candidate. Before we make that public and vote on it, there's a feeling that we want to be at least close. It's not a final decision, but it's it's communication about what would be in a contract. So the negotiation doesn't make a final decision. I want to be clear that the board votes on the contract and on candidate in the end. But the the process has typically at least gotten an indication that you're really close and the terms that we'll be voting on for a contract. Alicia, just want to clarify that two different things. It's like, so usually what would happen is the board get together, regulate, it's kind of like ask that person to go and make the contact and do the, you know, the negotiation. It's really, I was saying, I remember sitting in my dining room with the registrar there, and our chair rushed into the other room, negotiated, and then we would talk to the board. So it really is a board, you know, the board has a very big heart in that. So it doesn't, it's, because the way you study, it's not like one person goes up and does all this negotiation. Thank you. And it's not really how it works. So I'm sorry, I'm just telling you.
No, it's just weird that we get a whole thing that says it works one way, and you're like, nah, nah.
Well, there's one person that's designated to do the talking. But I mean, Craig was in the other room, and he was going back. Like I said, the R G was, they spread the R G, the R matters, because it was an open meeting. I guess he was eligible to come. So usually, that is the chair. And here's the thing, I can't believe how much you're getting this chair. It's amazing, just yesterday, you putting all of this together, it's like a full-time job. And Lila is already in there helping as well. So for me, I would always, I would suggest it's the chair because they didn't come back to the meeting. But if you had some reason you wanted to not do it, I would absolutely support that, given all the work you were doing. But to me, that's, I just wanted to get clarity on that, because it really isn't one person getting down a whole bunch of decisions for us. I would envision the process being, looking at cast contracts that have been negotiated that the board would see, so you see the kinds of terms that are in the contract. So people have a look at that. And then if it is in the same room and someone's on the phone, someone still has to be doing the conversation.
Are we having a discussion?
Well, we can discuss it, we just, we, people wanted to know what they were voting on. That was what we had talked about, so we've.
Process, that's what I'm asking.
Pardon me?
Can we follow process? Because what it seems to me is that you and Alicia are pontificating, and we're not able to have the actual board conversation.
Okay, I thought as we move this round, I refer actual, Laurel, I'm not trying to exclude that. So it's just giving you the background of what I know Alicia was just.
And I hate that she knew.
I get the first. Okay, Gordon.
I guess I just wanted to ask about the, if there's really an established process? Because my memory of the negotiation for the contract for the interim superintendent, which is what I was grounded, was that the, I I assume the board in the end, I think we voted to approve it, but we didn't have any role in forming it. I don't, I never even saw it until recently. So I don't know if that's an anomaly, and there's really some established process that works the other way. But that's my question.
I don't know that I personally have an answer to it. I just got the same information. I was only around for the one example you had for the interim contract as well. Alicia just shared another example, which is how we might want to do it, where you had, it's not like an executive section, see if I got this right, that you did your, thinking of your first choices. And then there was a conversation that someone would have with that person. And if there were questions about what some of the the conversation was about, we'd go back in and talk about that. Is that how that worked? Okay, so that's another example. And Laura.
Well, I, I think one of the phrases that terrified me the most in the world is, that's how we've always done it. So I'm very much, I look at us and go, we are a, most of us, a new board. A majority of us is a new board. And so I like, what I found this discussion was us coming together to discuss how we would like to do this. And I appreciate knowing the history, but I also know as a board, we get to decide this. How, as long as we're not breaking the law, we get to decide how this will look and what makes the most sense, and who will do it. And so that's the discussion I hope we have, is how to do this. So, and I would like to to suggest that, I guess, we're gonna, first of all, when we, this conversation started, there was no, there were no, what are we, what are we, we are not deciding anything right now. We're just talking about the possibility. So my thought is, we send somebody who has a lot of history with negotiations, and we, and we could do it, I guess, the way where I may sprung. To me, it's like, well, I think we had a doorway, you could hear, what is that? But then comes back to the board, and and then they go back out. And I think this is all happening in real time, because I think time is important here. Especially, we've taken a lot of the time of the people that have black for this job. And I would like to get onto a decision, because we still have other things, new people. So that's my understanding of this. We get to decide this, so let's, let's think about this. Who who can be, we can, I guess we don't vote on it, but we talk about who that is? Because I, for me, I'm sorry, Gordon, but I, everything I know about you is you're the negotiator person. So I, that's my thought on that.
Other thoughts?
I just have a question, which is, having again, no evidence or history or whatever, is, and. So it's something that does need a person, but again, I guess the question is like, do we get to also definitely make the process?
Do we also get to what?
Definitely the process, or have to say in the contractual terms?
Well, that.
Like, is that, you know, I'm just kind of curious, just the way where.
I think that. Yeah, I'm going to. Where responsibility is and what the like. Yes. As a board member, what are the key things that like I am going to be making a decision on?
We will send some examples, that for sure, an example of a contract or two that's been done. And I think those are questions that I would need to have legal counsel for for a contract, what has to be and what doesn't. And we can ask that same question. And then we could have the conversation, I guess, what we want, like, you know, if there are limits or whatever.
And then we're like doing this now, and this is all new to, and others to, but it's like, we've just been getting information in real time, and it's like, and I know, my receivance hasn't been from Christine or whatever, to like make this today too, but it's just like, we're just, we're so enamored of processing, yet we're just.
we're so enamored of process and yet there still seems to be very little of it in this. I think, is that just me? Am I just experiencing that way? Like, I mean, uh, so, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like, there's probably no counselor here that I'm trying to get to. I don't know if that is help.
Yes, I do. Good, great. Um, Michelle, that's your hand up first.
Yeah, um, I agree with you. Just in two minutes that we've been talking about this, I have no clarity whatsoever in a direction. I understand that you can show us previous contracts, but I don't know what we're supposed to be doing. I don't know who's supposed to be doing it. I don't know how these things are decided. All I've heard is, well, we did this way, come on, and we did this way, come on.
I need like a list of responsibilities in this superintendent. This was just, yeah, okay. Um, Laura. Oh, sorry, Alicia. So my suggestion and when I make a decision is that, um, next week, uh, will you make, so, oh, got that, and say, send someone, this becomes very political, um, believe it or not. And so I want the whole board to be, you know, on this, uh, because it's a big deal, upsetting salary, um, and setting benefits. People look at those and, and, um, we all want to have a say in that. So my suggestion is, and I don't, don't know what happened with the, with this contract, honestly, I, I can't remember. And it was COVID, so we won't cope. Um, but I do know with the, the two prominent superintendents, that the team likes set what our salary range was, what our benefits, how we, and to set all of those things out. And then we don't really need a negotiator because you're not trying to talk them in or down or anything. What you need is somebody to, you, you need a collaborator. You need that person that will bring it back and understand that the board is the employer here, not the person making that, that, deal, if you will, losing my words. Um, so that's what I would look for is, is that. Absolutely, I will stick to this. The board should be making those decisions, not one person. And so I just really, you know, whatever's been done in the past, I don't, that, that to me is really important. And I'm gearing for some of you that I think it's important as well. Laura.
I, I, I'm very concerned about what you just tripped explained. Because I, I, I think that is a system where if we're an executive session, we can't vote and some, and everybody is just going, okay, maybe, I don't know, and I think we all need to decide. And it, it, it sounds very messy to me. So I think one of, one of the things to answer to Michelle and, um, Kurt B. is that if you don't understand it and if it's not clear, um, that means, A, ask for a policy and there probably isn't one. And, and B, we did decide as a board about it. And because that's the super important thing is I feel like I was left in the same position you two feel. And I, I think it's the plan. And I don't want it to be the plan. I, I feel like I was, I was just dropped into the middle of it. And on my first day, I was attacked for making a motion and trying to help teachers during COVID. And I, I, it's really important that you just feel like you can bring forth anything and if the process isn't exactly correct, there is a process to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm just with a, sorry, just with a process case of it, is that like, sorry, we, we seem to be in order of the process and I'm willing to negotiate this sort of the process or whatever this, but like even for this thing, I'm like, just in terms of this process and the superintendent search, I think like, and Michelle would put words in your mouth either, but like it would be nice to be like, hey, you're responsible for designating a blah blah, a board negotiator. Two, you're going to be negotiating a contract with a superintendent. Three, you're going to be setting, getting contract and you know, these setting terms of the contract. Four, like, these are like key buckets of what your responsibility in just this one process is. Like, I feel like that's not even reasonable to ask. That way we can ask and get and receive questions and information specific to those tasks at hand. Like we do with the stuff that is set on our agendas for upcoming board meetings. And like, again, like I said, this at my very first board meeting, which was the last one, like, it's just kind of, like, I mean, Laurel said as a record, but it's just, it's just, because it's in a clear position to just have to make the decisions on this. But whether I agree with it.
So I, first of all, I want to apologize. I'm a little, I, I'm learning too, so I sent this.
This isn't, this isn't a like, oh, I'm being, I'm just standing there.
I, I, I'm just apologizing because I think we're all learning as we go and it feels really funny. I sent this as soon as I realized that was part of the process. So, um, you're getting that in, in maybe a few hours later or a day later in real time. So I think, um, I don't know that I have all the answers. I know I don't. So I think when we meet, I think we need to look at a couple of, um, uh, I'm just, I know, I'm just, I, I, a, a couple of examples of contractors, I'm proposing the next step. So that we can then outline what are the, what are the things we have to negotiate and how some options for process that we could talk about. What's legal? Is there anything out of legal framework that we can do here? You know, and we're going to know if there's guardrails, but something we shouldn't do or something we absolutely should do and whatever's in between. Because I don't know what those guardrails are. Yes, Laura.
I, I would like there to, like, the guardrails to be like for negotiation, like, we figure what those out. We put the, we put those out, we give them to who we chose to do the work. And if it falls inside that, then they can bring that back to us. We're pretty much good to go. And if it falls outside of that, they still bring it back to us. So we just have to, but the, we just have to look at those guardrails, which is basically what a contract is, you know, like the least of those of it and, and present this.
In some way, yeah, and I think we should, well. Alicia, I think, well, Michelle had her hand up, I think, before.
I, I do before, um, I, I feel like it is negotiable. Because that's when, when you're hiring someone, there is negotiation at all through, that it's not, it would be nice if everything were a collaboration, but you're, you're negotiating a contract.
Alicia, and, and I think what Laura pointed out is absolutely true. We give us the guardrails, we give us the parameters in which you can do that and they probably, somewhat like, and I think, and this would be a good question, but for Christine, we may be able to make some of those decisions because it's a personnel decision in executive session, because there are a few things we can do. But you know what? I'm not sure. So that's a good question to get answered, um, if, that we go. That we might go, you know, just want to be careful. Um, uh, so, so I think we should get those guardrails, we should understand, we should have them and we should do that next week and then be ready to go with this and give people what they need to make the subtle decisions. My two cents. And we want to go with that plan because I think we need someone that actually knows the legality of that concept. Okay? Uh, Laura.
I'm just going to do an Alicia and be like, so what, we're going to.
What are you doing?
I'm gonna do the.
Let's do the stuff alone.
Good. Please, let's do it.
No, point of personal.
So we're gonna come back next week for sure, but also, I, this is also to sum it up for staff that we need to know some past contracts, what that looks like, what the parameters, legal, including legality, those are. And to be able to decide, um, what that, vote on it, I guess? Um, who's going to, who is going to be our adversary? And, and what that, those things look like, what we choose from what, what's out there. I say we just pick something, but.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Great, okay. I think you did a great job summarizing it. Does everyone go with the summary?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so, item one. Items for future action, I have a list here, but I have to locate. We have a meeting next week. That's good, that's growing. We have a couple executive sessions and, uh, now a meeting to do a few items, but I'm trying to see where I wrote these down. But I'm not seeing. Can anyone help me out?
What, what have we done?
We have, there were two items that we wrote down for future action that are in my notes during the course of the meeting. And they might have gone in the other room when we went.
We chose. Does anybody remember? Carrie, oh, what? Carrie is.
You have a Carrie, great, thank you.
I can tell it's a couple. The board table until the June first meeting, uh, the vote on, uh, the policy on equal employment opportunity uh, with General House will come back with some, uh, proposal language. Board table until June twenty-second, the discussion of board policy K G B B. Firearms prohibited, uh, for discussion and vote on, also for, on the time for community input. The board needs to decide at a future meeting on the date, format, and ground rules for the open hearing to be held, as the board just voted on, uh, to be held regarding the complaint filed March seventeen. Not sure that I captured everything. Those are three items that the board discussed during this time for future meetings.
And if any other board members have brought something up that we said we would put on an item for future action, Gordon, is that your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, the two, the two things that I remember us putting on the agenda for, I think for June first were, um, voting on instructional minutes and voting on the policy around, uh, around the issue of, um, parents' right to know, teachers' assessment of standardized tests.
What was the second one?
The policy version of the memo that Sid sent out last Friday that, that, um, teachers are free to give their honest opinions about the value of standardized tests when asked by parents.
Did we have the date on June first for that or did we ask Christine to, um, draft something? And we would see it this month. I mean, we did say the first date, certainly. Okay, great.
No, it was the first read on the.
It was the first read, I gotta be clear. Okay. Thank you.
All right, I have something in my brain, just get.
Good.
Well, I also have a question, just want to get, because I have a question about, um, um, the board. This is a conversation we had. I know we voted on something, but I think there were, were there other things that would be deciding who is on the committee? Would that be for future action?
Yeah, can we ask?
Yeah.
Can I think you guys have an answer on that, which is, you know, I really, I, I really appreciate a board, um, uh, helping, uh, staff committee, I do. I just really would like to know, because in my years here, there's been reasons we've made strategic choices about why to and not to, um, have them. So if they're different, you know, we talked about E K minutes, you, you have to, um, notice the meeting and all those things and, you know, membership, I kind of have something about membership and I'm sorry, no one's here to answer that for me. So I kind of want, I would like us to know what those are and adhere to them as we move forward with that committee.
And I think, um, I would say, when I first got on the board, when I was first chair, we, the chair just talked to board members and then assigned people to committees. And then this board has chosen to ratify those placements. So that would mean that if we, if I said to Maya, would you be on that committee? That would be great. And then this board would rat, would choose to ratify that. That's the way I'm working, agreeing with you. So, yeah. Uh, Laura.
So I remember my, my other thing is that I would like a discussion, um, to be started about our complaint process and the, um, how it is used inequitably on board members. And that our, our system as it stands is, is racist. It's inequitable. So, and we need, and I think this is quite a big conversation, but you can see from the complaints against me and how people are, are writing them, there is a system in place that allows the use of structure to oppress a board member, to try, to attempt to oppress. And it's a waste of our time as a board.
Do we have head nods?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the vote of at least three people, that's all I need.
Yeah, we had more than enough head nods. Okay, Gordon.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to the thing I, and I may have missed something, um, from being online, but I thought that Laurel raised before, which is, we voted tonight to, to, um, make the committee about the North Region into a joint board superintendent committee and defer discussion on how we want to constitute that. And I think it's a, uh, I mean, I think it's different than, you know, the standing committee on the budget that somebody gets appointed to. And so like the question of do we want to have parents on that, um, is a different question. So I would, if I thought that that's what Laurel was saying, but whether she was or not, I would like to have that, that discussion about how do we want to constitute that committee as an item for, um, for future action on an upcoming meeting.
Do we have some head nods for that one?
I think we, kind of.
All right, anything else? That I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eleven fifty for continuing.
I'll be here at two other people and then you and I. So I just assumed that.
Like, are we just gonna like jump into a thing?